For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Zuber, would you please call the roll?
Sure, Commissioner Cruz. Welcome. Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Good evening.
Commissioner Janowski.
Hello.
Welcome, thank you. Commissioner Okon.
Here.
Commissioner Singh is not here. Commissioner Watkins.
Here.
Commissioner Weber.
Present.
Commissioner Zuber is here.
So I would like to welcome our two newest planning commissioners, Gordon Janowski and Alan Cruz. Welcome, gentlemen. Pleased to have you on board. You know, we said goodbye to our longtime chairman, who's now doing good for Canton on the zoning board of appeals. So we welcome both of you and look forward to working with you. Next on the agenda is approval of the minutes from December 5th, 2022. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Are you, Alan?
Yeah.
I have a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by Commissioner Okon to approve the minutes. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes of December 5th, 2022 are approved. Next item on the agenda is acceptance of the agenda. Patrick, if it's okay, we would like to make one change to the agenda and move the election of the officers that are up to right now, if that's okay with you folks.
Yeah.
First meeting of the month and we're getting our first meeting of the year and we're getting ready to start off into the business at hand. I guess at that time then, is there, do you guys have any words or can we just go ahead and take nominations for the various positions on the commission?
I think we have to move to change the agenda and then move to approve it.
You're right, I'm sorry, yes. So are there any, so that's one change we want to, we move the election of officers. Are there any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
I move, we accept the agenda as amended.
Support.
I have motion and support to accept the amended agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So we accepted the amended agenda. The first item on the agenda now is the election of officers. So is, given that, Patrick, is there anything that you need us to do or can we just go right into taking nominations for the various positions?
I believe it's just taking the nominations for the positions of the planning commission for chair, for vice chair, and for secretary.
I'd like to nominate Dawn to be chair. She's been on this committee for, well.
Eight years.
Eight years. Has a lot of history on it and I think she would do a great job as the chair.
Support. If you're willing.
Sure.
Able.
Are there other, are there any other nominations? Okay. I guess we can do, do we have to do roll call vote for those? Okay. So hearing no other nominations, do I hear a motion to support the nomination of Dawn Zuber as planning commission chair for 2022, 2023?
Support.
I move it.
We have motion and support to elect Dawn Zuber as planning commission chair. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? So be it. You are now the planning commission chair.
I gotta start now? Okay.
I have a, I have a new, I, yeah.
And we have to elect a vice chair.
Right, right. So do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I think that our current vice chair has done a super job and I'd like him to continue.
Aye.
Would you accept that?
Yes, I would accept that.
Support.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Eggenberger and support by Commissioner Okon for Doug to continue on as vice chair. Any further discussion? Signify that you approve by saying aye.
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 It's gonna take me a while to get the hang of how to do this, you guys. I don't have Greg's Spanish. Okay, thanks. And then we also need to appoint a secretary or nominate a secretary. Do we have any nominations for secretary?
Chair, sorry, I have to ask if there's anyone opposed to.
Oh, I'm sorry, anyone opposed, thank you.
She's new.
I need help. Anyone opposed? Hearing none, seeing none, I think we got that one. Thank you. Okay, do we have any nominations for secretary?
I think Alan would be great. This is news to him, but.
Do I have to take notes? Just to clarify, you're gonna have to use a last name on that one since we've got a couple of Alans.
There's two Alans, yes.
I'm sure new Alan would be great also, but I would like Alan Okon.
I would support that.
Support that, okay, so we have a nomination, will you accept that nomination?
Sure.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay. All right, very good. Yeah, let's have a voice vote on Alan Okon becoming secretary. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any nays? All right, congratulations to.
Do we switch places?
I mean, no, I don't, no. I want the gavel though, no, I'm just kidding.
Now you can have it.
I don't even know.
Did Greg ever use it?
No. He never did, but I'm going to. All right.
Sounds dangerous.
Does. All right, so next up on our agenda, do we have any communications?
We have, there's one communication that we emailed to the planning commissioners this evening for a public comment that was received by staff through email for the Tremont Place. So we'll go through some of that when we go through our report. Otherwise, we had received some publications from Michigan Association of Planning for Planning Commissioners Toolkit and we thought with some new planning commissioners coming aboard and having them get started on some of the materials that are out there, we just ordered a bunch of additional copies, so they're out there for everyone, so everyone has the same publication from MAP.
The Planning Commissioners Toolkit?
Are you telling us we weren't doing it right, Patrick? Absolutely not.
All right. Thank you very much. So we have a couple of public hearings this morning, we have, or this evening, I'm sorry, it just seems early. We have actually 11 items on our agenda, which we've already accomplished one of them, so we're gonna move through things as expeditiously as possible. But we have two public hearings, one is Tremont Place. So Patrick, can you tell us all about it?
Sure, thank you. Tremont Place is a proposed residential development and it may sound familiar. It was previously named Tremont Place, but without the E. And then prior to that, it was named Wellington on the Willow. And this, this one has a history that goes back a few years that includes a conditional rezoning agreement. There's a conditional rezoning agreement for this site that provides for up to 282 residential units and the applicants are proposing 282 residential units. So the density is within the density authorized in the conditional rezoning agreement. Prior to this application, the prior version of this plan had 268 units that were proposed. So there's an increase of 14 units from the last plan, but still within the conditional rezoning agreement density. The, this is the proposed third amendment to the final plan development for, for this project and the applicants can get into a little bit more detail in terms of the reasons for their amendment and some of the major changes. One of the, one of the causes of the amendment was some factors that deal with, previously, the plans had some stormwater ponds on the north side of the site that was within a floodway and Wayne County standards don't allow for the ponds in a floodway area. So that caused the applicants to have to do some major redesigns on the site to make the ponds farther south and out of the floodway and then everything had, as a result, moved south in terms of much of the development of the area. But a lot of the open space is still preserved, so I'll try to scroll down onto one of our, one of our sites there where it shows the layout of the units. And the, the site size is about 40 acres, a little over 40 acres. The development has 17 townhome buildings and eight stacked flat buildings. And the townhome buildings comprise 74 units and the stacked flats have 26 units per building and there's a total of 208 units in the stacked flat buildings, which are three stories. There's also a clubhouse and a pool located on the property. The open space for a plan development is a minimum of 25% and the proposed open space for this project is about 60% of the site. In our staff report, on page three, we have the schedule of modifications that are proposed as part of this plan development. Plan developments typically come with what's called a schedule of modifications, which is a list of all of the items within the zoning ordinance where the applicant is asking for relief and those are modifications. If it was not a PD agreement, they would be variances under the jurisdiction of the zoning board of appeals. But because it's within a PD agreement, they would be modifications subject to that legal agreement. Most of the modifications are related to setbacks and separation distances between units in order to have the clustering that's proposed. And by way of doing the clustering, there's a balance of open space that's increased as a result. There are two access points into the site. The main access is the north side of the site off of Lots Road. The secondary access is also on Lots Road on the south side of the site. It's a little bit more of a minor access, but two points of access are required per the fire code, so they have the required access on the site. To the east of the site is in the city of Westland and there's a single-family residential development that's there and they have some stub roads going to this property. But on previous versions of the property, those roads were not proposed to connect and they're not proposed to connect on this project as well. So the area between this project and the residential development in Westland to the east will have a landscape buffer between the two. Also, one of the concerns of some of the neighbors in the development to the east and the city of Westland was whether there would be construction traffic on their roads going to the site and the applicant has told us that there will be no construction traffic going through those residential streets in Westland, that the construction traffic will be from Lots Road. There's an existing sidewalk along Lots Road for pedestrian access and there's also internal sidewalks throughout the entire site accessing buildings, the clubhouse, and all the areas in between. The site will have a lot of grading and filling of wetland areas and those areas are subject to approval by Department of Eagle. Many of the wetland areas and densely wooded areas will be preserved. A tree survey is included and the landscape plan is proposed to replace the eight trees that will be removed. So there's very little tree removal. A lot of the major tree stands that are on the site will remain in place, many of which are located at the south side of the site. I understand that there is a Eagle or MDEQ permit based on the previous development, so the applicants will be required to go to Department of Eagle for permits based on the proposed design if it's approved. We have some comments in the, in the staff report about more site plan related items like landscaping and lighting and things like that, which the applicants are aware of some of the modifications and they can be made before site plan review. If the plan development is recommended for approval, then the next stage would be for the applicants to proceed with their site plan application. So if the planning commission makes a recommendation on this plan tonight, the applicants will be back before the planning commission at a future meeting with their site plan that will include a lot more details that address the items noted in our staff report that relate to a site plan. The next topic in our report is the architecture. There were architectural plans submitted for the buildings and the proposed elevations of the townhome buildings, they don't have the same, they don't have any of the reverse gables and the elevations that were on the previous plans that were approved. So the previous plans had some reverse gables and making the roof lines more interesting. The proposed elevations of the stacked flat buildings have fewer reverse gables and the townhome buildings don't have those reverse gables. So the architecture is a little bit different on these models versus the ones that were approved back in 2021. The elevations consist of brick and siding, which is a mix of horizontal and vertical siding and the brick ranges between 12% and 30% for the buildings, which was a modification that was approved in the previous PD agreement. The proposed percentages for brick for the stacked flats is 21%, 12 to 15% for the townhomes and 27% for the clubhouse. The zoning ordinance requires a minimum of 50% brick, but if there's a definite benefit and there's architecture that's worthy of a modification for less than 50% brick, then that's a modification that can be granted by the planning commission. For the parking, the applicant proposes 424 parking spaces for the eight stacked flat buildings that are allocated as a mix of between garage spaces, private drive spaces in front of the garage, as well as some surface parking. And based on the number of the bedrooms, the stacked flats, the ordinance requires 528 parking spaces. So there's a parking reduction of 104 spaces. But based on our review of the parking generation manual by ITE, as well as the applicant's experience with other apartment buildings, multifamily complexes, 424 spaces appears to be more than adequate. And so by reducing the number of parking spaces, reducing impervious surfaces, that's more area for landscaping, open space, bio retention, which is proposed on the plan. The only other item that I want to note is that the PD agreement is still under review. It's mostly consistent with the township's PD agreement template, but there are minor modifications required by township legal council and planning division staff. So there's some language that was changed in the agreement. Instead of referring to a final site plan, it refers to a final engineering plan. And we think some of those changes are based on the intent to couple together the PD agreement, the PD amendment and the site plan. But since the site plan will be on a different track than the PD plan, we think that the language should be reverted back to the current text of the adopted PD agreement. So we think they're relatively minor modifications, but we recommend that the PD agreement be satisfactory to legal council review and the planning division staff prior to review by the township board of trustees. So with that, if the plans and elevations are satisfactory to the planning commission, we recommend approval of amendment number three to the Tremont Place PDD, subject to four conditions. The first is revising the PD agreement to the satisfaction of township legal council and the planning division staff. The second, adding the scheduled modifications to the plans. The third is widening the internal roads to 27 feet per the zoning ordinance and/or revising the scheduled modifications accordingly. And fourth, making corrections to the plans noted in our planning division staff report. So that concludes our write-up and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing, so do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Weber. We're going with the W's today. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Hearing is open, do we have a project sponsor here that would like to speak? Could you go up to the mic and tell us about it?
Good evening. My name is David Stolman and I'm president of Biltmore Development, here representing Lots Road SoB LLC. It's nice to be back in front of you tonight. We're here tonight for your consideration of our amendment to the Tremont Place PDD, formerly known as Wellington on the Willow PDD. With me tonight is Jared Keim with Atwell Firm, our civil engineer, and Craig Norgard with Hobbs &amp; Black, our architect. As you are aware, the Tremont Place PDD was unanimously approved in 2020 by the township and the site plan was unanimously approved shortly thereafter. Since that time, the project has been delayed as a result of a number of factors outside of our control relating to watersheds, stormwater detention, and floodplain and floodway issues. We are excited to say that after two years of tedious, expensive technical engineering work, we have resolved these issues and are ready to proceed forward and bring this project to fruition. The PDD site plan in front of you tonight is very much similar to the previously approved PDD site plans, but with a different shaped and designed stormwater system. As Mr. Sloan's presentation was quite thorough, I'll keep my comments brief as he covered the important elements of our proposed PDD amendment and the changes to the previously approved PDD plan. In short, all the changes that the township has requested and that Mr. Sloan has just articulated are acceptable to us and the plan set will be revised to incorporate these changes. They include slight modifications to the landscaping plans, photometric plans, and dumpster enclosures, as well as slight changes to certain specific portions of the internal roadways. Furthermore, the suggested revisions to the PD agreement are acceptable to us and a revised redline PD agreement is ready to be resubmitted to the township attorney. We understand that the township has spent significant time and resources to the development of the Lots Road corridor, including analyzing the opportunities and constraints of the area, modifying the township future land use plan, paving Lots Road, installing water main along the right-of-way, and most recently approving a municipal sanitary lift station to service the area, which will be a joint effort between ourselves and the township. As a private developer, we very much appreciate these efforts and without them, the project would not be feasible. We believe the Tremont Place development will be an excellent addition to the township and will be a project that the township and its residents will be proud of. Moreover, we hope that Tremont Place will become a springboard for further development of the Lots Road corridor and further the township's investment of both time and money in the area. We're here to answer any questions that you have and we're happy to be here.
Thank you. It's a public hearing, are there any members of the audience who would like to speak about this project? Okay. Please come to the podium and, and don't forget to fill out the little form too. But tell us who you are and your address, please.
How you doing? Welcome, new commissioners. Robert McCoslin, 1981 Lots Road. I'm on the corridor there in Lots Road. Patrick, I got a question. What, what zoning are we operating under now in that corridor?
The current zoning is, the underlying zoning of the site, which is under a current PD agreement. It's an R6 conditional rezoning, subject to statement of conditions and also a C3 wetland area on the very north side of the property.
So in your opinion, the corporate overlay district doesn't apply to any of the properties?
It's under a, the conditional rezoning removed the corporate park overlay from the site.
When are you gonna remove the corporate park overlay altogether?
We haven't made any decisions on the future of that district.
But you understand that by delaying that makes projects like this harder to go forward. The whole, the whole corridor has been stagnated by 20 years of this type of regulation. I mean, it's kind of obvious, isn't it, at this point? Corporate overlay is done. I think we need you as the head planner to tell us that, so we know where to go forward. We're pretty much lost. I mean, sure, Mr. Stolman comes in and he's gotta jump through hoops three, four times to redraw this thing to, just to meet a PDD and I, and I'm all for a PDD. Gives you the flexibility. But if you want the whole thing to rise at one time, you have to give us some guidance on what do we apply? What legislation do we apply here? We came in heavy 25, 30 years ago with a book that thick. Got us nowhere, put us behind. Passed on a lot of good opportunities. Community is developed now. You got your commercial now. This is what speaks of the community. What are you gonna do to finish this? Are people just gonna sleep here and go to other communities to do their daily business or have a job? This is, this is this board's vision. You have to have a vision of what we're gonna do there. And we need, in order to entertain people that come there and want to invest money, we need some guidelines. And I think it's really important, because I don't really see anybody here that, that started with the corporate overlay. You understand what's happened in that area.
McCoslin, we're, I don't know if you're aware, you probably are, I know you're a longtime resident of Canton and you've seen a lot of changes. We are undergoing the review of our master plan right now, which I'm sure the whole corporate overlay district will be part of the discussion as we go through the various areas of the township. Tonight, we're here to address this particular development, but we hear what you're saying and, you know, it's noted and it, and it's something that will likely be discussed as we go through the review of the master plan.
Kind of glad you brought that up.
Actually, your three minutes are up, sir.
Jimmy, yeah, quick, I'm gonna respond to him. On the, you know, I went, I went to those meetings in regards to the, and again, I just have residents telling me what I could, what they would like to do with my property. And that was my feedback. Thanks. And I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to address the particular project that we have before us?
Good evening, I'm Daniel McCoslin. I won't reiterate what my brother just said, but I will say a few things. You know, we have been struggling there for 30 years with the corporate overlay and it's unfortunate that gentlemen like this project, who has to go through this type of tedious design work and, and, you know, to even bring something like this to fruition, because really, the whole thing is kind of counterintuitive. We paved the road without utilities. We didn't put a sewer in. We put water on one side. We had the road tore up. We had the opportunity to make that the dream it should have been. You know, the corporate overlay was basically designed like, like the Federal Reserve is doing with the interest rates. They're raising the interest rates because they're trying to.
Excuse me, excuse me, we're talking specifically for comments about this project. We have a public hearing section at the, or a public comments section.
Well, I'm making a comment about this project, if you'd like me to finish, because you're taking up my time.
I was thinking you were talking about the interest rates.
I'm talking about how the area has come to fruition. This is a very important decision you're making here tonight. It's a very important decision, okay? There hasn't been a development on this side of North Lots Road, which is the south side of Ford Road. There hasn't been a development in 30 years. Last major development was the Home Depot in 1994 and that was the catalyst for the corporate overlay. So this has been removed from the corporate overlay, which is allowable. I understand that. But as the gentleman says, it's a springboard, but potentially, what are we gonna springboard to? More apartments? Is this, is this the baseline for the corridor, apartments? That's the question that needs to be asked. I'm not, I'm not against their project. Their project is well-designed. I looked at it thoroughly today. I looked at all your designs, your designs are very well-engineered. I applaud you for your engineering, I applaud you for your diligence to do that. But you got to remember, the very first design of this was to put multiple family last. It was a corporate overlay park. It wasn't an apartment overlay park. And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to defer their project by no means. They're, they're, they're not guilty of this. The community was guilty of this. And that's the problem, because now we're gonna have apartments before anything else. I don't know if that's good, bad, or indifferent. All I know, all I know, is that's what's happening. But we, we seem to have no, like my brother said, guidance. If you could take the corridor between Schoolcraft and Eight Mile and look at the same time that they were developed and compare them to Lots Road, it's night and day. And that's what we've always been crying out. Why was this inflicted? Why was this enabled? And now these gentlemen are working very hard to try to get this project off the road. But again, does it speak to the corridor? That's one of the questions I'm running around in my head. How does it impact the corridor? Good, bad, or indifferent? And that's the discussion that needs to take place. Set their project aside. Their project is a project. Their project is a project, and it's a fine-looking project, but how does it impact the corridor? The corridor that's been neglected for so long...
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments about this project specifically? Hearing none, seeing none?
I move to close the public hearing.
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Typically, for our newest members, typically what we'll do now is go down the dais and everyone will ask questions or talk about what they think about the project. So just in light of the fact that you're brand-new, I'm going to start at this end and start with Commissioner Watkins.
Gotcha. Thank you so much. Super quickly, just one quick question for the developer, if I could. So I'm looking at the market study, and it's funny, I know this project has changed names a few times. It's carrying the old name, right? It's carrying the Tremont without the E, yet the data on the market study gives me May 24, 2022, and throughout, I checked the entire document. It still carries the old name. So I'm assuming this is the most updated market study that we have, number one. The second question is going to be, on the, both the average rental rate on the lease portion and then on the purchase, what's the dollar cost per square foot that we're specing out here to sell on the for-sale units?
There are no for-sale units in the project. They're all rental.
All rental, okay.
It's all rental, and it'll vary. Obviously, we're in a bit of a, economically, a little bit in flux right now with inflation the way it is and with interest rates. Our best projections, as shown in the market study, is the rents will likely be around a dollar, say, 60 a square foot, up to $2, depending on the size of the units. But with the way things are changing in the market right now, by the time we would put a shovel in the ground, finish all the engineering, get all the final permits done, get it in the ground, and start really building vertical to lease up, things could change.
If I could follow up, and then, so then, the cost to construct was, am I looking at $224 per square foot, cost to construct?
What would that include?
That's all in, that's base level of amenities. Is that where the developer is on each unit or thereabouts?
I think it's probably higher than that at this point. It's changing, and literally, when you get to the point of actually starting construction, which we're doing in other locations, we are bidding this out. Literally, we finish bidding out a project, and then we start rebidding it, because, you know, lumber prices were crazy for a while, and now they've dropped. So it's hard, I wish I could tell you, here's the number, this is what it is, but it's varying across the board.
Mr. O'Conne.
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. I appreciate you keeping the amount of open space that you have in this area and not really taking down a lot of trees and stuff, but my question is, with 400-and-some-odd units, unless I'm missing it on the landscape plan, are you proposing any kind of parks for the facility at all, or any kind of, I see there's a line on the bottom there. Is that a walking trail or anything?
It's a walking trail. To give you a little background, because this property has a long history, the project was, and this had nothing to do with us, but decades ago, a developer came in and apparently clear-cut the site, removed all the topsoil from the site, in violation of state law, local laws. I don't know if he ended up going to jail. It was one of the few instances where you heard a developer really acting badly. As a result, when the previous developer was here for Wellington on the Willow, prior to that, those approvals, they worked through a very detailed conservation agreement with the state of Michigan that involved the open spaces being in conservation easements, which they are now, so those will never be touched, and then also additional wetland mitigation to make up for the wetlands that the previous developer filed. So our site plan, you know, we sort of inherited all of those conservation easements, and all of our development is proposed around it without impacting those at all, in accordance with, you know, the state-approved conservation easements. So the areas here are basically, that are sort of in open spaces, are not available for any kind of removal of trees, which is why you see so much that we, I mean, on this project, we're removing eight quality trees, that's it. The balance of it has to stay natural, under a recorded conservation agreement.
If we could take a look and maybe work with the planning department, there's got to be some way, I'd like to see some kind of little park or something by the clubhouse or any kind of, I don't think we have anything over there, do we, Summer, in that area? Again, if this is kind of the new norm for Lots Road, and this is what we're looking to do, it'd be nice to be able to provide the residents over there with some kind of park for the kids to play with. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Egenberger.
Thank you. Patrick, if I'm reading this correctly, one of the things that you need from us is if we're okay with the new design?
Yeah, the elevation designs are different than the previous elevations that were approved by the planning commission, so in light of some of those changes, that's probably one of the more major changes, is the new elevations.
Don, as an architect, looks at these much better than I do, because I can't remember what the previous ones were. It seemed like you said something like they wanted to change them to make them look more modern. Is that right? That's the decision about how they are? And I think they do look very modern. I sometimes worry that, how long does that last, you know?
May I interject?
Well, that's...
So you know, just because of this long history here, when we approached the township originally, for, once Wellington on the Willow was approved, and we approached the township about what is now Tremont Place, we proposed a more traditional, what you would see in Canton, type of architecture. And we had image boards that we provided the township, and surprisingly, and maybe it's because I'm the developer of the original Cherry Hill Village with all the interesting styles, I don't know, but the township, surprising to me, came back and said, no, we don't want all this brick. We don't want all the same elevations that we've seen throughout the township. And so through a process of showing image boards, the administration decided that they liked a contemporary farmhouse look. And so that is what has been designed. And obviously, as part of those conversations, we made it clear that we can't make it look like a contemporary farmhouse look by meeting the traditional Canton brick percentages. And so we worked very diligently with the community to come up with a design that they liked. While the product has shifted from a for-sale product to a rental based on the economics, we've tried to design a, something that's true to the farmhouse style while leaving some brick on it. I know some architects would say, you know, we shouldn't have brick at all. I don't agree with that, but we tried to come up with some balance between that. Craig could speak to it more, but I think that's essentially, you know, we're trying to deliver to the township what they want. They wanted a fresh look, something new and contemporary, and that's why we headed down this road. Otherwise, I think, to be frank with you, we'd be in with red brick. I think I have the old plans for Wellington on the Willow, and they're exactly what you'd expect. Red brick, colonial-looking, and, you know, the decision was made to not go in that direction.
Well, I like the new look, so I was with the commissioners on that, the trustees. But Don can speak to the elevations and all that architectural sort of stuff, but I like the look. I like the colors. I like the modern look of it. I agree with Alan. I think some parks would be great. The only other question I had is, if I remember correctly, last time this came to us, the neighbors were worried about a lot of the animals that have been living in this area, and are we feeling like that one area that now will remain with all the trees? Any...
They're not being impacted, and to be clear, because we did see the letter from the residents, this project has been gone through a regulatory, before we were involved, really a thorough regulatory analysis, and all those conservation easements are in place. The state of Michigan has approved this. I think this was a very large headache for Andy Hearts over at Eagle going through all this, but, you know, they have approved it, and there, you know, there's never been any suggestion that we would amend the conservation easement to reduce that of any sort. So it's exactly the way it's supposed to be, based on, you know, the state's regulation of both the wetlands and the wildlife.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Weber.
Thank you. First of all, I got to ask, because I've never heard the term before. What is a stacked flat? And what's the difference between stacked flat and a traditional apartment building?
Oh, we try and use that term to give a better definition to what's inside the internal, the insides of the building. The townhouses are true townhouses, two-story units with an upstairs and a downstairs. The stacked flat buildings are 26-unit buildings with, if you want to call it, a ranch on the first floor, and then ranches above them. So you've got flat on top of flat. You could call them conventional apartments. It's just the nomenclature that we use, so people understand. There's no up and down living. So for seniors who are looking for a non-staircase type of unit, all the first floors would make sense for them, and then obviously, we have upper units that are ranches, you know, on top of ranches.
Much like Commissioner Egenberger, I actually appreciate the new design. I'm happy to see more of a contemporary design. It's clean-looking. I'm tired of seeing the old traditional New England-style brick. Not that it doesn't look nice, but I think we have enough of it. The one question I do have, though, with the less brick, and because these are now rental units, what commitment is there to properly maintaining these facades and that sort of thing? You know, with, obviously, they will weather and all that sort of thing, and a lot of times, rental communities, after a while, tend to get kind of shabby around the edges, so we don't want to see that happen here.
This is going to be a Class A multifamily product. We intend on owning it and operating it for, you know, we're not sellers of these properties, and obviously, in order to get high rents, we have to maintain the property. I'm not sure what else I can say beyond that, but historically, and you could look at the history of Biltmore, we've been sort of a best-in-class developer, an owner-operator, and, you know, the impact of one, you know, I don't know, tarnished project impacts all of them, and that's just not how we operate.
Thank you. I don't have any other further questions.
Mr. Foster.
I don't really have questions. I will just say, I do like the elevations of the project. I also like the fact that there are, the existing sidewalk on Lots and that the sidewalks connect to the unit, and there's walkability within the complex, but I do agree with Commissioner O'Conne. It would be great if you were able to maybe add like a swing set or something for kids to play on, just because there is really nothing nearby in the community. I think the closest park would be probably on Kaepernick Road, and that's, you know, kind of a distance. Yeah.
Mr. Singh.
Thank you. I don't have any more questions. I think a lot of those are already asked, but I do like the project. Just, if I remember last time, Patrick, when there was a change in this project, at that time, it was changed to sellable units, if I'm not mistaken, and now it's again back to rental units?
Yes, I, well, if you want to say unfortunately, unfortunately, the reality is, right now, with the cost of construction, when typically attached product, whether they're townhouses or ranches, are typically a more affordable product, and given the cost of construction, where, and you're seeing this through the market, there's very few attached products that are for sale, because with them being smaller, the cost of construction per square foot is higher, and the units just aren't affordable. When you compare that to what a consumer can get for the same unit as a rental, where they don't have to put a down payment, it's not even close. And that's why you're seeing throughout Southeastern Michigan, sort of a surge in heading towards multifamily rentals as opposed to for-sale. I think, I might be mistaken, but there's very few new attached for-sale projects in Canton, and I know just from Cherry Hill that the townhouses that are my homes is building, you know, it's just skyrocketed in terms of prices, and it's just not affordable for people in terms of living in the community. They have to look elsewhere, and it's just the reality of today's economy.
The last time when you guys made that plan to make these units sellable, the cost of construction was the only criteria?
Was significantly lower. I mean, we've seen an enormous spike in costs, and then, you know, in addition to that, interest rate hikes over the last year, you know, that is hitting for-sale buyers, where besides just the cost to construct is higher, now they have to pay a higher interest rate on their, whatever mortgage they get, and it's just gone beyond the point where they'll start looking in other communities for something that's affordable within their price range. That's just the reality of today's economy.
Thank you.
Mr. Cruz.
I've got a few questions regarding the design. Can we go to the existing conditions plan? I think it's the second sheet. That one right there. So you've got a lot of floodway, wetlands, conservation easements, and you're wiping away portions of that. Is that right?
No, if you don't mind, I can take a minute and give you a slightly more technical explanation of what's occurred. The conservations are locked in. They have been recorded. That has not changed at all since probably 2018, when Eagle and the previous development.
Conservation easements are dedicated to the state? Is that right?
It's a recorded document that's saying that those areas where you see is open space, and we have 60% open space here, those are unchanging, immutable, and we've never ever suggested or would be interested in reopening that door, because I don't think the state of Michigan would allow it, and we've basically worked around that for, you know, those conservation easements the entire time. The floodway and floodplain and stormwater issues, it's a complicated technical matter, and I'll give you kind of a brief overview of it. The original Wellington on the Willow plan was designed with the stormwater basin in the floodway and the floodplain. Typically, the floodplain, that is acceptable if properly engineered within the floodplain. In the floodway, it is not typical to allow that. The previous developers had designed a stormwater system with it in the floodway, and they had received a permit from Wayne County, I want to say in the early 2000s, for that work. The developer for us for Wellington on the Willow had kept the exact same stormwater system, and it remained unchanged. When we inherited the project and began working on it, we kept the stormwater system as is, no surprise to Canton Township's engineering department, et cetera. When we got the PDD approved for Tremont Place, and we got the site plan approved, we then began the engineering process. We submitted it to Wayne County, and Wayne County said we will not permit the stormwater system in the floodway, and we spent a lot of time with Wayne County over close to two years of work with them. In addition to that, there were multiple other complications. There is obviously a creek with a floodplain and floodway in the area. Previous, in the past, I want to say in the, somewhere mid-2000, around 2010, there actually was a clomer, a lomer, a floodplain adjustment that was approved by FEMA. Somehow, with no explanation, they never adjusted the floodplain map. So the FEMA map was not consistent with what actually was happening out in the field, if you will. We discovered that, and that there was a major error in the FEMA map. In addition to that, the paving of Lots Road and the improvements in Lots Road altered the grade, which further exasperated what was already a floodplain mapping problem. As a result, when we found out that there was this issue, because at first, we did not know that there was a problem, we went back through, and over the last year and a half, we resurveyed all of the property, both ours, as well as Lots Road and the adjacent areas that we needed to, in order to ascertain the exact elevations of the property. We then hired a... We then hired a company called House Moran, it's a nationally reputed floodplain/floodway expert, and had them rebuild the entire floodplain model. And I'm, I'm speaking in generalities, because it starts getting very complicated. Jared can, if you want, can explain more. But we essentially went and remodeled the entire area. And we did all of this in conjunction with, I was updating Bill Surcheck the whole way as we were sort of peeling back the onion here and figuring this out. We remodeled the floodplain and the floodway, and then we took that information, redesigned the stormwater basins, and then we went back to Wayne County, and the stormwater system that we have now in front of you has been approved by Wayne County.
Do you have a permit from Wayne County?
We, we don't have a permit. They won't permit it until we fully engineer the site, but we've sent them all of the information they need to, to approve it informally as far as how it's being designed. The design itself has been approved by them. In addition to that, to make more complications, they changed their stormwater rules and now require infiltration into the soils for the stormwater. And you'll see in our plan that we have a number of areas where there's infiltration areas, bio, bio-retention areas, in order to absorb the stormwater. So we've really had to go back to, you know, really a baseline and rebuild the whole thing. All of the stormwater design that's been done and all the floodplain and floodway work has been brought to both Canton Township's engineering department, as well as Wayne County, and at this point right now, everything looks like we have resolved all of the outstanding issues.
So my question is, okay, a lot of information, I get it. Wayne County has the new rules and the infiltration, does this plan convey that and meet the rules?
Yes.
And when you say they've approved it, they've approved it without a permit?
No, 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 they, we, we cannot get, they, Wayne County will not approve it till we have a full set of engineering plans, which we would-
Kind of a preliminary approval?
Yes. Put it this way, they, when we became aware of the problem, we reached out to Wayne County executives, the higher-ups at Wayne County, went through a process of saying, hey, we need help to figure this out, it's for the benefit of Canton, because without doing this work, the Lots Road corridor would really stagnate. We need to figure this out. So the county has worked with us very diligently, and what we've done is, as we've, once we were able to come up with a stormwater design system that appeared to work, and how the basin would work, and how the infiltration would work, we took all that information, submitted it to Wayne County, they reviewed it for 30 to 45 days, and then we had meetings with them to further refine it, and ultimately, however you want to put it, we have a verbal approval from them that the stormwater system was designed correctly, and once the full engineering is done, we'll submit that to them.
Okay, so let's go back to that existing plan. You're saying the conservation easements are not being touched?
Correct.
But when I look at that, it looks like it is being impacted, unless I'm looking at it wrong. Let's go back to the existing conditions plan. So you've got labels there of conservation easements, right? You're telling me that none of that's going to be touched?
That's correct. The conservation-
How about this big easement right in front of us, right there? That, that big swath, isn't that an easement?
Oh, okay, these aren't related to, directly to the conservation easement.
Labeled conservation.
Yeah, let me explain, there are access points. Eagle wants to make sure that once the project is developed, they have access. So they, when the original plan was approved, they went and created easements where they have access, they can go check and see if anything's been touched. Though, and they're not really conservation easements, they're, as you can see, it's-
Well, they're recorded.
Yeah, no, and you can see where it says access easement. So we are, those access easements will change, because the site plan-
So you'll need to vacate those easements.
The access easement.
At the end.
The access easements, we will modify so that they're correlated to where our roadways are.
So what, the rest of the easements you're not touching?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
So my point of this is, has Eagle, did you do a clomer with FEMA to get your floodway revised?
We have-
The reason I bring this up is because if you haven't, that'll change your plan, and we'll have to go through this exercise again. That's what I'm trying to get at here.
A clomer is typically done-
You're changing the floodway. Your elevations are higher, so you have to do-
We literally expect to file the clomer next week. It's been designed-
Okay, so you haven't done it?
No, we've talked to Westland, we've talked to that, but it's all in process. And typically, none of this, a clomer would not have been done at a PDD level, it's usually done after site planning, but-
Okay.
So the sequence is-
I'm going to set an example for you.
Okay.
I'm reviewing a Chick-fil-A in Taylor, they have a clomer, and because of the feedback they've gotten, they've had to change the plan, and that's kind of what I'm getting at here. If you haven't done your clomer, that could possibly affect your plan, is that right?
It's possible, but this site's a little unique in that, in a typical development-
Could you go to the microphone, please, because no one at home will be able to hear you?
In a typical development, at the PDD stage here, you wouldn't have even begun to look at the actual impacts to the floodplains and floodway. That would happen during the detailed engineering portion of the, the plans, when you would prepare that package to submit it to FEMA and get those approvals here. This is a little bit of a unique scenario here, in which we have already had the PDD approved, this is an amendment to that PDD here, and knowing where everything sits, we've taken the additional steps to modify the, the studies and get all that stuff prepared in advance, so we know where we're going to sit at. The, the clomer's been prepared, it's ready to submit, and there are no impacts to the floodway itself, that's very specific as part of the clomer, we can't have any impacts to the floodway. And the, the modeling and the studies show that the fills versus the compensatory cuts that we have for the floodplains yield a zero rise in the floodplain. So there's no actual net impact to it.
Thank you for that, because I could-
Commissioner Cruz, could you give us like a five-second description? What is a clomer?
It's a letter of amendment to a FEMA map. So if a FEMA shows a floodway and your elevations are higher than that floodway, then that floodway is not correct. The floodway has to, correct me if I'm wrong, has to represent the true elevations, and that's why you need a letter, a letter of map amendment, a revision to that. So, okay, and I, I'm not trying to attack your method, I, I just want to make sure that we're following the right process. We're doing a PDD, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, so if something changes on the PDD, it has to come back in front of us?
The PDD would generally have the number of units, the site layout, the scheduled modifications, and when they come back with site plan review, that site plan would have to be fixed in terms of where everything is, and the separation distances have to be consistent with the scheduled modifications. If the PDD is approved, is recommended for approval, and if the board approves the PDD, and then the site plan comes through, and the same is recommended for approval by the planning commission and approved by the board, then they would go into their final engineering and start engineering it based on that layout. If, for some reason, something changes during engineering review or they have to move something, we would evaluate it to see if it's a minor change or a major change. If a building shifts and a separation distance is narrower than what's permitted in the scheduled modifications or otherwise in the ordinance, the procedure would be to come back to the planning commission for an amendment to the PD agreement and the scheduled modifications, and possibly a site plan amendment as well, depending on the scope of the change.
My other question, can we zoom out a little? Can we go to the site plan, the next page? Is this parcel always been, has this been split from another parcel? Because I've never seen roads dead-end like this. And it just, I know that's Westland, right? Is that, but was there a previous agreement that these roads are going to run through? Because now they're just, they're not even cul-de-sacs, they're just dead-ending. It's, it's poor design, you know?
Yeah, typically, I can speak for, in Canton, when we have developments and the property next to it is, is vacant, and there, we think is a likelihood of development, we may have the developer stub a road, just like what it's shown there, with the expectation that if the development, or if the property to the, that's adjacent, is developed, that they will connect their roads to it. That hasn't always happened in the township, but for the most part it has, and we have those cross-connections. Here, and, and we, we can control it to some degree with both properties being under our zoning ordinance and under our development regulations, so it's easy to have, or easier to have roads cross-connect within the same municipality. Here, it's different, because we're in a different municipality, different zoning requirements. So in Westland, they probably thought that, well, when they develop it adjacent to the city, then there would be cross-connection roads and probably a road that would take this development all the way to Lots directly. I'm, I'm just speculating there, I don't know that for a fact, but there was probably the, the anticipation or expectation that that would happen. But with us being a different municipality and zoning ordinance and jurisdiction, it's harder to make that cross-connection.
I can add one thing, which is, from what I understand from the previous developer, the issue of connection came, was brought up by, probably in 2017, 16, 18, somewhere in there, and the Westland residents didn't want a connection into the project, and the planning commission and the board did not want a connection either. So it was sort of a mutual decision, and then in order to buffer the residents, we have a 60-foot setback, the four-foot berm, we meet the ordinance for all of the ornamental trees, and then in addition, the evergreen trees that are in that buffer, we have 25% more than what is required under the ordinance in order to create a buffer that was satisfactory. So you have a sense of it, because I was curious when we got the letter from the people of Westland, just roughly, I called my landscape architect, we have about three times as much landscaping now in the Tremont Place plan as the original Wellington on the Willow in terms of a buffer there. So we've really tried to ensure that the neighbors in Westland are not impacted, and those townhouses will be no higher than a standard single-family home. So we, we don't expect any issues there.
Just two more things real quick. I want the engineer to consider, the surface course of this asphalt, you've specced out 13A, that's kind of an old M-dot mix, and, you know, I want the Canton Engineering Department to weigh in on this. 5E1, we've used in a lot of our communities, and it's smooth, it's a newer M-dot mix, it's strong. I don't think the cost is, is any higher than 13A, but you get a smooth, tighter mix. So it's just something to consider for the surface course. The other thing is, PDD, correct me if I'm wrong, that's a special zoning, where you kind of impose your new rules that don't fit under a current zoning, is that right?
In large part, the, the use has to be, the use and density have to be consistent with the underlying zoning district, unless otherwise allowed in the PD. So for the most part, we'll have uses that will comply with, with the district density that complies with the district. And then the PD is, is more, usually it's for tighter setbacks or tighter separation distances, so that there's a smaller development footprint. So it, it becomes a little bit less to develop when there's a smaller development footprint, and then the balance of that is open space.
So it gives Canton some flexibility to alter restrictions, setbacks, things like that, right?
Yeah, the township can approve modifications to the zoning ordinance standards in the scheduled modifications, which becomes an exhibit to the PD agreement. And the applicants are required to include what are called definite benefits for a PD. So most of the time, the definite benefits are the open space, the environmental amenities, the architecture. Sometimes it's sidewalk, site circulation, overall project design.
Given that, regarding the park, I, I feel strongly about having a small little park for the kids here, and I think Canton has the flexibility, because it's a PDD. So I'm kind of echoing what everyone else said about having a little pocket park somewhere, you know, on this site, and I'd recommend that. That's all I got.
Commissioner Janowski?
Hello, everybody. I like the layout, the plans look fairly well organized, but there is one general concern. So we have these, what we're calling stacked flats, and they're towards the front of the site. And one thing I noticed about them, they're pretty tall, and they do fluctuate back in, in the way they approach their massing. However, there's no trees or any buffering around that, and dis-sawfened it. You're talking 40 feet, 45 feet high in, in the areas. That's my only opinion, I'm a little bit late to the table, so I can't influence that. But that's pretty much the only thing that I see, and I, I concur with everybody with park and walking spaces, and it can be done economically, you know?
We certainly, if you can make that a condition to a recommendation, we certainly will look at it and see if we can find a place that's satisfactory. Understanding that we have a lot of floodplain and floodway here, so we'll have to, I'll have to sit down with Patrick and talk about where it's an appropriate spot to, to locate that. So, I understand your comments. As far as the landscaping for the stacked flats, we do have landscaping proposed for it. You know, if that's something that you want me to sit down with Patrick and look at and see if we need to add additional landscaping as we can. As we said, the trees that are there right now, we're really only taking out eight quality trees. So, and there's an enormous, I've got the numbers here somewhere, but, you know, 300 or 400 trees that are staying.
Go to the, there's a, there are pictures of the, of the, of the-
Icon, sir?
Sorry, I turned it off.
That's okay. We just want to hear you.
It's the isometric plan view of the, of the-
It's the cover sheet to the supplemental design.
Oh, got it.
Ah, there it is, right there. So if we look at, yeah, and it doesn't look too bad here, but when you look at the actual, you see, if this tall hole in there, there's no buffer, and then you have the same thing recurring in some areas. Now, some of them are buffered, but there are some areas where they're not. And that, that scale, I, it just, subconsciously, it doesn't feel good for people to be in that space.
Okay, I can't speak to the rendering, which, to be frank with you, it's an artistic rendering, so, you know, the accuracy of, but, but we'll be happy to sit down with Patrick, you know, obviously prior to the township board, and look through it and see if we can add some landscaping, and if the buffers are appropriate, you know. We want to do a good job, and, you know, we want to make the community happy.
Appreciate it.
I do, sorry. I do have a couple of questions about the architectural stuff, too. We have two architects in a row here, apparently. Actually, Patrick, if you can go to page four of that packet, I noticed on all of these, the, the townhomes, on the elevations, both the, the front and back, and then the side elevation, I'm seeing that little pop-out white piece with the four windows in it. But on the plans, there's no deviation in the, the elevation, and I'm curious what's going on there.
My name's Craig. Yeah, you're correct. We're, we're missing the bump out in the floor plan, so that'll show up. So the elevations are true, and we're not, the plans are outdated, so there'll be a, you know, a 16-inch bump out at the garage.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you. I, I like the look, too, by the way, except I want to go to page 74 of the packet, which is page 39 of the, this supplement, 74 is the overall page number. I gotta tell you, I'm not crazy about the, the strange asymmetrical, lower-pitched roof coming down, the fake roof coming down over that white section or gray section there, that. Can you help me understand why that's there?
I mean, it's, it's not a fake roof, but, I mean, I, if you're suggesting that we change- But, I mean, I, if you're suggesting that we change it, we could look at continuing that horizontal fascia across to the shed dormer on the right.
Yeah, it looked like it was kind of a, a reverse gable to me. Sorry, Mikeoff. Thank you. You're like, who's, who keeps doing that? Yeah. Okay, yeah, I guess I would like to see something a little bit more elegant there. I really liked the rest of it, so, but that just strikes me in the, in both the 2D and the 3D drawings, it strikes me as a little bit clunky. I think that was really all I had. Anybody else have any final comments?
I just wanted to ask about, I think we were to make a motion, do we put that we would like to see a park?
I think, I believe that should be a condition.
Yeah, so if you wanted to make a motion and you wanted to articulate any conditions to your recommendation of approval, you would articulate that in your motion. So whether it be a park, whether it be fixing the, the roof line, whatever your condition may be, you would include that in your motion.
Okay. And I know that Dawn often did them, which I think means that maybe Alan will be doing them now.
No, I think anybody can do them.
Oh, I know.
I just tend to jump in. I think you could do one.
Good God, all right. We'll try and throw in what we need to throw in. I move to recommend approval of amendment number three to the Tremont Place PDD, formerly named Wellington on the Willow and Tremont Place. On parcels numbers 049-99-0001-712, 049-99-0001-713, and 049-99-001-714, and 049-99-001-716, as proposed, subject to all state, county, and township requirements and subject to the following conditions. Number one, revising the PD agreement to the satisfaction of Township Legal and Planning Division staff. Two, adding the schedule of modifications to the plans, widening the internal roads to 27 feet per section, 2.10 of the zoning ordinance, and/or revise the schedule of modifications accordingly. Four, making corrections to the plans noted in the Planning Division Tremont Place PDD, formerly named Wellington on the Willow and Tremont Place Amendment Three. Five, adding a park to the area. Six, changing the gables?
The roof line?
The roof line. And seven, am I missing anything?
Should you specify which building?
Oh, yeah, the stacked flats.
Okay, changing the roof line on the stacked flats. Support. Thank goodness.
All right. We have a motion by Commissioner Eggenberger and support by Commissioner Foster. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none, to quote our former leader, Mr. Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberg.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jankowski. Commissioner Ocon, yes. Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairman Zubor.
Yes. You did very good. Great job. All right, so next steps for the project are what, Patrick?
So the next steps for the project will be for the applicant to revise the PD agreement and the plans according to the conditions that were recommended by the planning commission. And that would happen prior to the Board of Trustees taking final action on the application. And then if the application's approved, it will return to the planning commission for site plan review, at which time there'll be a few additional details, plus any changes that were approved by the board as conditions.
Excellent, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we have item number two on the agenda. True storage. Patrick, could you let us know what we need to know about that, please?
Yes. So true storage will be item number three. I've had to renumber here myself. And so this is, true storage is a proposed special land use.
Oh, right. Oh, sorry. We're just figuring out why it's item number three. We didn't renumber our lists.
That's okay, I didn't do mine either, but I'm getting there.
Thank you.
True storage is a proposed special land use for the site illustrated here on the map. It's located on the east side of Hagerty Road and just south of Copernick Road. There's a vacant lot between Copernick and the site here on the map, and it's also adjacent to I-275. And the applicant proposes to occupy this existing vacant building for a mini warehouse establishment. The subject site is located, or it's a zoned light industrial LI, and mini warehouse establishments are special land uses in the LI zoning district and subject to standards of the zoning ordinance for, specific to the mini storage warehouses. For a special land use, the planning commission is required to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to the township board on the application. And the township board has the authority to grant or deny special land use, has, and has that final authority. The site is about four acres, it's a little bit more than four acres, and it's surrounded by the light industrial zoning district. The proposed use we find is compatible with some of the adjacent land uses. To the south is All American Pet Resorts of Canton, to the west is DMS Moving Systems, and then again, the property to the north is vacant and to the east is I-275. The submitted plans comply with all of the setback standards of the zoning ordinance. The development standards for mini warehouses are also met for the minimum lot size, as well as some of the site conditions that are unique to mini warehouse establishments, including perimeter fencing. There are two existing points of access on the site, both of which are from Hagerty Road. Those access points are proposed to remain with no additional curb cuts on Hagerty Road. The plans provide the parking calculation for mini warehouse establishments. Based on the number of units within the building, there are 52 parking spaces required. The submitted plans include 99 parking spaces. The reason it's higher is that we're starting with a much larger number of spaces. The current site has 152 parking spaces because it was probably parked based on a warehouse or distribution facility, which has a much higher parking requirement just because of employment and customer parking. With a mini warehouse, though, the parking standard goes much lower. So the applicant is proposing to reduce the number of parking spaces from currently 152 down to 99. Much of that area where parking is proposed to be removed, there's landscaping, so we're going to see a pretty big reduction in the impervious surfaces and additional landscaping planted on the site. There are currently loading areas to the building at the northeast corner of the building, so those loading areas will be maintained. It, it makes for a pretty straightforward conversion in terms of, there was previously large loading areas for the warehouse and now with a mini warehouse establishment, a lot of those loading, loading areas are still needed, so they're already in place at the site, as is the dumpster enclosure in the northeast part of the site. There's a large, wide asphalt area in that northeast area where the site plan shows the circulation. The architecture of the site is not proposed to change. The exterior facade changes consist of a new loading, some new loading doors, new egress door and new canopies over the existing doorways. And the applicant is not proposing to change the color of the facade, which I think is, I think it's mostly white. The applicant has provided a detailed landscaping and planting plan that's designed to meet the landscape requirements for the frontage landscaping, both the frontage landscaping requirements for Hagerty Road and I-275, also for the parking lot landscaping and the building foundation landscaping. And again, to achieve this, the applicant has proposed to remove many asphalt areas on the west and south sides of the site. While there are many feasible areas to plant the foundation landscaping on the north and south sides of the building, the applicant proposes to locate the required foundation trees and shrubs in other parts of the site due to some of the challenges of locating foundation landscaping. So the plans must be revised to provide some additional details on both the front berm and the cross-section of the berm along Hagerty Road. But back to the foundation landscaping, there, there are feasible areas to, to plant and the applicant is locating some of the required foundation trees and shrubs, not necessarily adjacent to the building based on some of the challenges, but to other areas of the site where the material will be there, but it'll be in a more suitable area. For the lighting plan, there's been a photometric plan submitted. The illumination levels at the north and south property lines exceed the maximum of .3-foot candles, so those will have to be corrected on the plans prior to review by the township board. On the signage, the signage is reviewed by the building division separately from the planning division review of the site plan. Our only comment on that is that the wall sign on the west exterior has a different name, it references U-Haul, not true storage, so that's more of a, that's more of a text and content thing, it's just a note in terms of what's being put on there for the purpose of the site plan illustration. And also, the planned package includes design and dimensions for a ground sign, but the site plan has to give setbacks so that we know how far it is from the drive aisle and the right-of-way. There is decorative fencing proposed around the perimeter of the site, which is required for mini storage warehouses. The plans just have to be revised to show the fence at six feet in height, there's differing heights, but the six-foot minimum is required. Finally, based on the special land use standards of section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance, we find as staff that the proposal meets the criteria for special land use approval of section 27.03(c) of the zoning ordinance, and there are, I believe, 10 criteria there, subject to the items noted by staff in the report being corrected or otherwise addressed at the time of site plan review. So with that, the staff recommendation is approval of the special land use for the mini warehouse establishment on the subject site, as illustrated on the special land use plan for the reasons stated in the analysis, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and also subject to the items noted, noted in our staff review being addressed and/or corrected prior to review by the township board. That concludes our staff report and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Patrick, is the project sponsor here?
Oh, yeah, please go, go right ahead and move to open a public hearing.
Move to open the public hearing.
Support.
Hey, we have a motion by Commissioner Eggenberger and support by Commissioner Ocon to open a public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we, the public hearing is open.
I'm Tim Curry from DLZ Engineers. The owner, excuse me, Josh Sullivan from the True Storage tried to fly out this morning and planes were all down this morning, so he sends his regrets. Facility, the proposed facility will be a temperature or climate-controlled storage facility. All the units but two will be accessed from inside the building. The two that will not be are in the loading dock area and already have garage doors. We, Patrick described it quite well, we're going to use, reuse the existing building divided into the mini storage areas. Only modifications to the outside will be the overhangs for the doors, the canopies, and more access doors to meet fire code for maximum distance travel. Does anyone have any questions? All the comments that Patrick did present to us, we will handle. Photometric plan and the architectural plans, they had a problem with their software and a malware attack. That's back now, so we will get those fixed. And I think we've got plans ready that show that, the, with the True Storage logo. Still haven't got the exact size for that from the architect yet, but they said once they get the signed contractor on board and aligned, we'll get that to you. We did do, as part of the review process, we did do excessive, or no, we did do quite a bit of landscaping along I-275 and the west, west side of the building, Hagerty side. And I think that's it.
Is there anybody here from the public who would like to address this project? Come right up, sir.
My name's Guy Roberts, and full disclosure, I'm the current owner of the building, so we have a vested interest in seeing this project, you know, succeed. In fact, our closing is dependent on it. So I'd like to speak to the public and to the board and to the planning commission in regards to that. So as we moved to, to decide to have to sell this building, it came with a lot of regret. It's a good building, we liked the area, we liked the, the business we were doing in there, but since COVID, we've had some issues and things, so we've had to cut back on some, on floor space, quite frankly. We still have operations in the community, we still, we're a family business and, you know, so we still, we provide 30, 40 jobs in the local area and a lot of our traffic comes through Canton, so we support the local businesses in terms of the stores and restaurants and so on. So with that said, when it came time to sell the building, we frankly had a number of offers on the building. We didn't take the highest offer, even though financially that would make the most sense, but we, we chose to go with True Storage, even though they didn't have the highest offer. And speaking to the community, one of the reasons we thought that would be good is because the bill, their plan frankly presents less risk to the, the community, as well as they're taking actions to improve the site, which has been very similar for decades in terms of landscaping and so on. So with that also being said, being a storage facility, our estimate would be that there would be less traffic, there would, there would be less impact on the roads themselves with heavy trucks and so on, that, that traditionally the building has supported for the decades since it was built. And in addition to that, there's less risk to the environment in the sense that it's a storage facility as opposed to an industrial building where frankly, I know we've been, not since we've owned it, but since in the history of the building, we know there's been multiple companies in there that have had use of various machining fluids and cutting fluids and all that, that, you know, ultimately are controlled but do pose risk in their use and, and potential spills and things like that. So with all that in mind, we thought that was the right way to go, thinking that the community, it would be better for the community, it would also give the opportunity for the board and the planning commission to be able to make the necessary changes with the special provision to allow a facility such as this, or business such as this. And so with that said, I, we, we made the choice personally based on what we felt was the right thing for the community, even at a cost to, call it the overall sale of the building. And so we hope the board and the commission understands that, as well as the public who may be watching or listening at this time. And so with that said, we would, we are now, this has been dragging on for, well, at least five months right now since we originally signed our purchase agreement, so it's really putting a strain on our business and that's not necessarily your problem, but I guess my question then is, is what can we do to facilitate this, permits being granted and, and proper zoning and such that, you know, we can all move forward? and such that, you know, we can all move forward? And if there's anything we can do, we'd be, do our best to be able to support that. So I asked the commission and then, you know, the next step, which would be the board.
I think you'll have our decision tonight.
Okay.
Once that happens, you're done here.
Thank you.
Unless the board refers us back, refers you back or something, or the planning requires a change, so.
Thank you very much.
Fill out one of those little pink papers too, for the record. I think if there's none there.
There isn't, I don't see any.
Oh, we don't have those.
We haven't done those papers in quite some time. It's, we just have the sign-in sheet in the back.
I guess I'm just really old then.
I'll sign it out there.
Please sign in, thank you. All right, anyone else have anything to comment on about the project?
Can move to close the public hearing.
All right. Everyone supported that, all right. We have a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Do we want to start down at the technical end of the dais this time? Commissioner Jankowski?
You turn the mic down. Turn your mic.
Oh, sorry, yeah, thank you.
Just reviewing it briefly for the first time. I see the light calks and the other stuff that needs to be taken care of. That's fine. The only thing that concerns me when I saw that U-Haul sign, and I don't know, this is probably out of context, is this is not going to be, or we're going to prohibit a truck rental business like you see the U-Hauls with all those trucks sitting out.
The use of for rent vehicles is, I think typically something that is along Michigan Avenue, looking at the zoning ordinance just off my recollection, like car dealerships and vehicle rental agencies, those are special land uses in certain districts, but they're only limited to Michigan Avenue. Specifically, I think it's limited to roads that have a right-of-way of at least 200 and some odd feet wide, which by default is Michigan Avenue. So that's why in Canton, our dealerships are along Michigan Avenue and not along Ford Road, which is the case in some other communities where their main suburban road has dealerships. So a U-Haul place, I think that would be relating to rental of vehicles. I think something like that would be restricted to certain districts as special land uses along Michigan Avenue. But we'll look into the zoning ordinance to see how that would apply for something like that.
Cruz?
A couple of things. This parking lot looks like it's in really bad shape. Are you guys replacing or resurfacing the lot as part of this project?
We plan on doing a mill and fill on the parking lot.
Okay, perfect. And then you're going to restripe it, right?
Yes.
Fresh stripe. And then the other thing, it's not the end of the world here, but the barrier-free spaces are right up against the building. Are there any parking blocks, or is zoning prohibit that? I'm not sure, but a vehicle can run right into the building when they're parking. Doesn't look like it on this plan.
When we lost the parking spaces at the west side of the building, we moved the barrier-free to the north side of the building. We can add parking blocks for those ADA spaces, but those were the closest to the entrance that we had left.
I got you. And Patrick, maybe you can help on this. So typically, barrier-free spaces have a walkway where you don't have to walk into traffic, and you can walk, you know, you can create a sidewalk, but I know this is an existing site, but in terms of ADA requirements, there's usually a walk, and right here, there is none. So someone that's handicapped or disabled has to walk into traffic to access a sidewalk. That's just something I noticed. It's not the end of the world, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
ADA does allow you to go 12 feet behind the vehicle?
Not ideal, though.
Not ideal, but it's what we're left with.
And the Building and Inspection Services Division of Canton Township reviews permits and plans for ADA compliance. So when this goes in for permits or building review, oftentimes, things that fall under ADA get caught at that time, and sometimes there's minor modifications where some spaces may be shifted from, or some barrier-free spaces may be shifted from one part of a parking lot to another, or some additional concrete or ramping put into certain areas to allow for that access. So sometimes at the time of building permit review, that gets uncovered.
That's all I got.
Mr. Singh.
No questions.
Foster?
I have a kind of question, kind of comment. I don't have any issues with this project, but my question is, there seem to be a lot of storage facilities coming into Canton Township, and I just wondered if there was any market research or studies about the need or folks in the community or around the community looking for storage in the township, or how some of the other storage facilities were doing here?
Unfortunately, I don't have that answer at hand. The owner, Josh, did, but I know he did do some studies, and he determined that this particular area, there was a need for it. I don't know the data or the backup data, but they do do their market studies and determine their preferred locations, because at one time, we had mentioned going more towards Westland, and he said this was more viable in Canton.
Thank you.
Commissioner Weber?
Are these franchised? Is that what these are?
Yeah, True Storage owns it, but they have different companies operate them for them and maintain it.
I'm glad Commissioner Foster asked that question, because I was thinking exactly the same thing. There's a couple of different uses that we seem to be getting in abundance of coming into the township these days, and I don't have a problem with the use per se. The last thing I want to see, though, is an empty building sitting there rotting away. And I'm glad, I'm glad that you're able to find another use for your building, but, you know, market forces obviously dictate a lot what succeeds and what doesn't. But we can't control that, unfortunately. But just, just a kind of concern, it's not going to sway me one way or the other as far as what the actual use is, but that's, it is a concern to see, we wouldn't see too many more of these facilities at this particular time.
Okay. Commissioner Eganberger?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
Commissioner Ocon?
Patrick, just a quick question. Just, why is, why is mini storages required to have decorative fencing?
I think, well, they're required to have fencing, and it's more of a decorative nature so that, because they have to have a fenced-in yard, mini storage facilities will have a lot of fencing based on regulations. So with that.
But there's no storage outside?
No, it's for security, for restricting entry into the site so that, you know, it's harder to get into the site for, you know, for someone who might be trespassing or for theft, or someone who's otherwise not permitted to be on the site. So because there's a large amount of fencing required, it's, it has to be decorative and not just like a chain link or a cyclone.
Okay, just wanted, that's all I had.
Mr. Watkins?
Super quick, I know we're pressed for time here. I love the project. Couple of things, I know it's closing really soon. Was there Phase One and Phase Two ESA done on the site? And I only ask that because I know previous use was, there's some heavy metals cleaning that was going on within the framework of the building, and I think that's important to understand before, not to slow down that close, but to understand at this point. And then the second thing, well, I'll let you go ahead and answer that.
There has been no environmental study done yet this time, no Phase One, Phase Two.
And the second thing is, I wanted Commissioner Foster, what you'll find right now, and this is probably to everyone, within ear to the markets, you're going to find that building owners are doing now what it takes to be able to fill those buildings. I can tell you stories right now about Class A office space in cities like Dearborn that's now turning into self-storage, believe it or not, believe it or not. So right now, that's the nature of the market. You're going to see a lot more of it before you see a lot less of it, and I think this is a great project for this building. Yep.
And I had, I just had a question about the parking. If we, if there's 40 or 52 spaces required, why would you need 99? Why do you have 99 shown on the plans?
It's not needed. We have done, reduced a lot, but my big concern on most sites that get overlooked is, where do we put our snow? So I'd like to have room to put our snow and to have our minimum parking after a heavy snow or multiple heavy snows.
That's quite a lot of heavy snows parking spaces.
Yeah, but it also gives maneuverability to people. You've got people driving, you know, their rented U-Haul containers that never have driven a truck that big before.
That's a good point. Okay, thank you. Anything else anybody has on the board? Okay.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, please do.
I move to recommend approval of the special land use for a mini warehouse establishment use parcel number 131-02-0015-000, as the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the following items being corrected on the plans prior to review by the township board. Number one, revising the maneuvering diagrams to include maneuvering and access to the dumpster enclosure, as well as a circulation plan for the emergency vehicles on the north and west sides of the building. Number two, revise the plans to provide details and cross-section of the landscape berm along Haggerty Road. Number three, correcting the lighting plan to comply with Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. Number four, clarifying sign information and details. And number five, revising the fence to be six feet in height.
Support. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Ocon and support by Commissioner Watkins. Any further discussion? Down at the bottom.
So I want to make sure that's added to the plan, that you said you're going to mill and fill. Mill and fill, what mill and fill is, they mill off the top and then they put a layer of asphalt, so it's a nice-looking surface. You said that's part of the project, is that correct?
It's on the plans.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, okay. How many inches is that? I can't see, right?
I think it says an inch and a half.
I have nothing further, sorry. Just want to make sure it was done right.
It's the time to comment. No, it's good.
And then from staff for clarification, in our ordinance 6.02m, it has a statement that says that mini warehouse facilities may not include vehicle sales and/or rental unless applied for separately and said rental facility meets all requirements of the zoning ordinance, which would be for those types of uses I mentioned on Michigan Avenue for a rental agency.
All right, so we have a motion and support on the floor. Commissioner Ocon, can you call the vote, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Cruz?
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Jankowski?
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon, yes. Commissioner Singh?
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
And Chairman, oh, Chairman Zuber.
We do look a little alike. Yes. All right, we wish you the best of luck with the project, and Patrick, what are the next steps?
The next steps will be to make plan modifications prior to going to the planning commission, or not planning commission, but township board for final action on the special land use. We have recently received revised plans for True Storage, which we'll be reviewing in the coming days. So we anticipate that if all the items are addressed on those plans, this would be before the board sometime in mid-February.
Great, all right. Good luck to all parties involved, yeah. All right, next item on the agenda is, we have two zoning ordinance text amendments to talk about. We have solar energy systems. Patrick, you want to walk us through that?
Sure, thank you. A couple of months ago, we had looked at some initial solar energy regulations to include in the zoning ordinance. Currently, the zoning ordinance doesn't have any provisions for solar energy, so by default, they're regulated as mechanical equipment, which isn't really a good fit, especially for people that want to have rooftop solar. Right now, when we see, say, commercial applications and they have rooftop mechanical equipment, they have to screen that according to the zoning ordinance. So we're focused on making sure rooftop mechanical equipment is screened. So the problem is that, as the zoning ordinance has defaulted for many years in just classifying rooftop solar as mechanical equipment, it makes the use impossible for a residential application unless it was on the backside of the house that wasn't visible based on that regulation. So it's not a great way to regulate it, but in the absence of having any specific regulation for rooftop solar, it has to be regulated by whatever is a similar type of use. Recently, we had started to regulate them as wind energy systems. The ordinance has provisions for wind energy systems, and so we started to regulate rooftop solar like that until we had an ordinance. It's made things a little bit better, but it's really not a long-term solution to try to classify it as some other use. The appropriate way to do it is just to adopt an ordinance that's very specific to solar energy systems so that it's very predictable for applicants and it has clear regulations for what the community wants. So what we've presented is, this evening, is the same that was proposed at the November 14th, 2022, and December 5th, 2022, planning commission meetings, where it has fairly straightforward and minor solar energy system regulations for, that apply to rooftop solar panels, and also has freestanding solar panels where someone may put one in a yard. So our proposed ordinance is based on a model ordinance text that's been published by UFM and MSU as a way to promote solar energy, but also to include a model ordinance that communities can use to regulate solar energy, and there's different types of levels of regulation. These solar energy standards don't include solar firms, not that we don't want to have regulations for solar firms, but that's going to take a lot more discussion and probably several more meetings to figure out what kind of regulations the township would want for solar firms. And for solar energy systems, the reason that we made it a relatively small-scale ordinance amendment is we have a lot of either pending applications or upcoming applications from solar energy providers that want to do rooftop solar in residential areas. So they're looking to get those projects started soon if the ordinance can be revised, so our aim has been to try to get something that's more of a smaller scale geared more towards residential rooftop solar, but it would be any rooftop in the township, as well as some limited ground-mounted solar. But most of the applications that we get are for the rooftop just because of the exposure to solar. The last item I want to mention is that at the previous meeting, we discussed homeowners' association regulations, and some HOAs prohibit solar. Some are silent on solar energy, and some of them are in between that either have regulations in their bylaws or require HOA review of any plan for solar. So we're going to see private HOA regulations across the board in Canton, with some of the older subs not regulating them and some of the newer subs prohibiting them. And for those newer subs, I think it's a matter of whether the developer would update the bylaws or whether the homeowner- or whether the homeowners would collectively get together and adopt an amendment to the bylaws for solar energy. But those will have to be private decisions as they go forward with their association. So we have the text of the ordinance, both in our staff report and in a draft ordinance that would go to the Township Board if this is recommended for approval. So with that, that concludes our staff report.
Thank you, Patrick.
Move we open the public.
Hearing.
All right, we have a, a motion to open a public hearing from Commissioner Eggenberger and support from Commissioner Weber. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, public hearing is open. Does anyone have anything to, to discuss about that? All right, Mr. McCoslin.
Little insight, you know, as I sit here and hear the discussion back and forth. It's a cause and effect. You ask, why are these storage facilities popping up? I'm gonna tell you, it's apartments. Apartments.
We're talking about the, the solar energy.
Oh, I thought we were open.
No, no, this is the solar energy item on the agenda.
I thought we were open for him.
Not yet, thank you. Anybody else have anything to say about the solar, the solar amendment?
I move to close the public hearing.
All right.
Support.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing from Commissioner Weber and support from Commissioner Foster. All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right. Anybody have any comments about this, any concerns?
Just real quick, going back to the HOA issue, Patrick. I know we kinda got off on a major tangent about that last month, and I, sorry, I can't remember how, how we left it. Are we not putting in the ordinance or that, if you, and I'm not wording it the way I'd exactly, I'd, I'd want it. Are we not including in the requirements that they have to have if they're subject to such rules and regulations within their HOA that they have to show that approval to the township in effort, in their effort to get approved by the township? I'd, don't get me wrong, I'd, I'd rather not, but I don't wanna see the township get itself stuck in the middle of a battle between a resident wanting to put solar on their roof in the HOA, so.
Yeah, that's a good question. Recently, the, the township has discontinued any practices in the Building Division of requiring HOA approval for any kind of permits just because of how it, it creates a little bit of, of, of a friction between meeting a township requirement and meeting a private requirement of an HOA. So there have been signs posted all throughout the Building Division just stating to homeowners that we're not requiring HOA approval of permits, but that homeowners are advised to review their HOA documents before applying for a permit. So it's, we've, we've made homeowners aware of that if, if they're in an HOA that they need to look at their bylaws and conditions to make sure that what they're applying for is, is gonna be approved.
But maybe, maybe this is more of a question for council then. And I guess maybe I'm taking up the, the position that, that former Commissioner Green brought up in that, are we undercutting the HOAs by not requiring that?
No, no, you're not. So by you approving a township requirement has nothing to do with whether or not they can do it under their HOA. So it's two layers, basically. But whether you say no or yes doesn't impact what happens at the HOA, unless for some reason the HOA has some provisions that they require township approval first. But you're not undercutting the HOA by approving it. The HOA could still say no, even though you've approved it, and it's not like the homeowner could say, well, the township approved it, so I get to do it. Does that make sense?
I don't have any other questions.
Anybody else have anything? Anybody wanna make a motion?
I move to recommend approval of the amendment to the zoning ord- gosh darn it, quit jumping around. Sorry. Sorry, sorry. I move to recommend approval of the amendment to the zoning ordinance as Section 2.03I, which includes provisions for solar, solar energy systems as stated in the attached ordinance proposal. Thank you.
Great, we have a, a motion by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Watkins. We again have the W team. Commissioner Ocon, could you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Jankowski. Commissioner Ocon, yes. Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairman Zubor.
Yes. All right, Patrick, what's, what's the next step for that?
Our next step for this one will be to go to the Township Board of Trustees for final action, and the Township Board of Trustees will be required to have two readings on an ordinance.
Excellent, all right. Then we also have another zoning ordinance text amendment regarding drive-through restaurants. You wanna give us the background on that?
Sure, thank you. This next agenda item is more of a housekeeping item. What it would do is to add the phrase "drive-through restaurants" to the existing phrase of "fast-food restaurants" as a special land use in the C-three and C-four zoning districts. And in those zoning districts, fast-food restaurants are special land uses and aren't, and drive-through restaurants are not noted there. But in the C-two district, which is, in many ways, a less intense zoning district, drive-through restaurants and fast-food restaurants are tied together in the description. So we think that the original intent was the C-three and C-four districts to have fast-food restaurants and drive-through restaurants together. And since the zoning ordinance was adopted back in 1990, the practice has been to treat fast-food restaurants and drive-through restaurants as special land uses in the C-three and C-four districts. So the text amendment would just be to clarify some of the existing practices in the zoning ordinance. And there are some existing standards in the zoning ordinance for both parking and stacking and signage that couple together fast-food restaurants and drive-through restaurants. So we think it was the original intent of the zoning ordinance to have them, but we want to clarify the text just so that that's resolved and that anything that's been approved as a special land use in C-three and C-four is in fact coupled with fast-food and dry-through. So if, if the proposed changes are acceptable, our recommendation would be for approval. And it's just adding the text, quote-unquote, "and dry-through" to, to lines of text in the zoning ordinance in the C-three and the C-four districts.
Thank you, Patrick. Does anyone from the board have anything to say, the commission? Oh, oh, thank you.
I moved open the public hearing.
Support. Weber made a motion to open the public hearing, thank you for that. And Commissioner Eggenberger supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, anybody wanna talk about? Drive-through restaurants and, sure.
Does it address pickup window?
No, it just addresses fast foods and drive-throughs.
Pickup window. As we so artfully seen counsel come up with this phrase, and the one that's gonna be in use when it's least is gonna be, in fact, a drive-through window.
Well, I think that the use of the pickup window application, as it's been used in the township, has been very project-specific based on the, the nature of the use and the location of it, where some restaurants have been granted what's called a pickup window, where it's not a prototypical dry-through, but a pickup window is something less intense. And there aren't really provisions in the zoning ordinance for what a pickup window in that sense is. And the application of that standard has been based on an individual project itself through either special land use or PDD or generic site plan review of the project based on conditions of approval. And such conditions range anywhere from number of spaces, signage, things like that. But beyond, beyond that, it would be based on any kind of individual project.
Again, I'm not, I'm not against it. It's just that without this type of clarification going forward, I don't know you can make the change.
Drive-through windows, pickup windows, fast-food restaurants.
Close the public hearing.
Support.
All right, we have a motion to close the public hearing by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner Foster. Anybody from the, the board have anything to say? The commission? No? Any motions floating out there?
Now, I move to recommend approval of the amendment to Section 17.02B-8, Section 1802B-2 of the zoning ordinance by adding drive-through restaurants to fast-food restaurants as a special land use in the C-three and C-four zoning districts as stated in the attached ordinance proposal.
Support.
All right, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Watkins and support by Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Ocon, could you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster. Commissioner Jankowski. Commissioner Ocon, yes. Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairman Zubor.
Yes. All right, I assume that is going through the same process as the solar panel.
That's correct.
Amendment, so awesome, thank you, Patrick. All right, moving right along, we have no old business, so we're gonna move into new business. Item six is the Joy Road Business Center. Patrick, it's your turn.
Uh, thank you. The applicant proposes to convert an existing medical office at the building at 45185 Joy Road to a condominium form of ownership. And the building is illustrated in the aerial here that's on the screen. And the original site plan was approved in 2000, and there are no development changes proposed to the applicant's plan, except there are some interior changes that have been approved by the Building and Inspection Services Division that things of that nature will go straight to permitting. They won't go through the Planning Division application process, although when there are interior changes for a commercial site like this, we're included as one of the planner reviewers on the building application, which is why we're aware of the internal changes inside the building. The, other than that, or beside that, the design and the conditions of the approved site plan remain the same from 2000. The proposed condominium will keep the parcel boundaries the same. It will just split the building into two units so that there will be different ownership of those units. It allows multiple ownership on a site like any other condominium. And the condo form of ownership is fairly common for multi-tenant office buildings where there may be a practitioner that owns their own space within the building, but the group of owners form an association that are responsible for the common areas like landscaping, parking lot, maintenance, things like that. So that's really the only substantive change. The application meets all the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The only item that we did note was that when the plan was originally approved in 2000, the minimum required side yard setback was ten feet. And somewhere, sometime after, the zoning ordinance was amended to increase the side yard setback in the office district to fifteen feet. And that western side yard setback is currently ten feet. There's no change to that setback from the building to the property line. And the ordinance states that any lawful non-conforming structure that's established prior to the effective date of adoption or amendment of the zoning ordinance shall not be considered to be in violation, and it can be continued provided that the non-conforming structure remains otherwise lawful and that the structure is not enlarged or altered in any way which increases the non-conformity. So since there are no changes to the structure and the setback and the shell of the building will be the same, the building will just continue as a legal non-conforming structure if the condominium plan is approved. The parking will, will be the same. The previously approved plan had twenty-nine parking spaces, there's no changes. The landscaping must be the same as the 2000 plan, there may be some updates there. During the final inspection, we'll have the township's landscape architect consultant review the landscaping of the site to make sure it's consistent with the 2000 plan. And finally, the master deed and bylaws have been submitted and revised by the applicant pursuant to recommendations by the township attorney. Therefore, our recommendation for this application is approval of the condominium site plan subject to any additional modifications required by township legal counsel to the master deed and bylaws.
Patrick, is the project sponsor here? All right.
Good evening, I'm Kathy Reister. I am the attorney for this project. Since this is really a condominium conversion, it's legal document-driven. And Patrick really summed up the project well. He was exactly right, by this client-side properties. The owner of the entity also had a practice, a dental practice in Birmingham, very successful, and wanted to expand his practice and saw Canton as a great opportunity, found a building big enough for his practice and additional space. And when he went to find other dental-adjacent practices, they wanted to own the building. So he bought the building and started down this road. And there's really no, no external changes, it's all on the inside. But do one correction, there are three units. So there will be three units, three condominium units in the building. But other than that, I'm, can answer any questions, but it's really as Patrick explained.
For answering that question, 'cause that was one of mine, 'cause I saw on the planet, three units.
There, there are three units, yes.
So the purpose of this exercise of making it a condo is to split the building for three separate tenants, is that correct?
Well, the, the owner, the current owner has just a little over fifty percent of the building for his practice. There's sort of two wings, the common areas with restroom facilities and mechanicals are in the center, and then the other wing is being split in two. And yes, there is another dental practice, a dental specialist. Both of these are dental specialists, one periodontist, one endodontist. And they will occupy the space, and then there's a smaller space that's occupied by another medical provider.
So, Patrick, the restrictions for use still apply even though it's a condo, correct?
Uh, that's correct. The zoning standards for office still comply. So in the office district, you can have professional administrative office, you can also have medical dental office. So the zoning standards will remain the same.
So if a new tenant comes, what approvals need to happen for a new tenant?
Uh, when a new tenant moves in, and this is not just for condos, but it's also for any non-residential use of property, they have to complete what's called a certificate of zoning compliance application. And it's an application where either you have a new user, a new business name, or a change in tenant. So every time there's a change, they apply for a certificate of zoning compliance. They have to put in the business name, and then the Planning Division reviews those. We make sure that the use complies with the zoning district. If there's any additional information that we need, we get that from the applicant before we sign off on that change. And then if they do get their certificate of zoning compliance, then they do the re-occupancy process through the Building Division.
That's all I have.
Well, they just might wanna turn, and this is a nice short one. If not, I'll do it. Okay, I move to recommend approval of the Joy Road Business Center condominium site plan on tax parcel seventy-one dash zero-one-zero dash ninety-nine dash zero-zero-one-zero dash zero-zero-zero. zero dash zero zero zero, subject to any modifications required by the township legal counsel to the master deed and bylaws.
Support. All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Eggenberger and support by Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner O'Conne, could you call the roll, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jankowski.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne, yes. Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairman Zubor.
Yes. All right, next steps. Patrick?
The next steps will be, because it's a condominium site plan, it has to go to the township board of trustees for final action.
Look, thank you. All right, we have item number seven, S&amp;J Asphalt Paving. Patrick, could you tell us a little bit about this?
Sure, thank you. S&amp;J Asphalt Paving is an existing paving contracting company on the south side of Michigan Avenue, located between Lots Road and Hanon Road. It's east of I two seventy-five. And the original site plan was approved in nineteen ninety for the eastern parcel only. The applicant proposes the following changes to the site, which consists of two parcels. The first is construction of a three thousand four hundred and seventy-five square foot addition to the west side of the warehouse and office building, which consists of expansion of both the warehouse and the office areas. The second change is to expand the parking lot westward. The third change is to construct a detention basin on the property in the southwest portion of the building and the parking lot. And fourth, changes that are related to landscaping, loading, dumpster enclosure, lighting, fencing, and installation of fuel tanks. The property is five point seven acres, and it's located in the light industrial district. The light industrial district allows for contractors' yards. The outdoor storage on the site, there are currently materials stored in the rear of the site, which is on the south. And the site plan states that all outdoor materials stored on the property will be removed from the site. The remaining outside items stored on the site will be vehicles and equipment within the storage area designated on the plans. They're located behind the building to the south of the building. If there are materials proposed to be stored on the site in the future, they would have to comply with the storage requirements of the zoning ordinance. The site complies with all the setbacks and the height requirements of the light industrial zoning district. For access management, there's one point of access to the site, which is from Michigan Avenue. The applicant proposes to relocate this access westward to allow room for the proposed building addition and to improve access management for the site. The driveway will be thirty feet wide, which is the requirement of the zoning ordinance. And there's a truck maneuvering plan on sheet C eight of the site plan set, which includes a turnaround area south of the building. The maneuvering plan, turn template, shows a vehicle backing over a curb on the southern edge of the paved area. So that template must be adjusted or the paving must be expanded, but that's a relatively minor change. Because this is along Michigan Avenue, any change to the driveway is under the jurisdiction of M dot, and they would be required to get an M dot permit for those changes. For the parking, there are additional parking spaces proposed to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. The parking calculations based on the floor area are ten spaces for the office and eight for the warehouse area. However, if it's based on the number of employees plus the calculation in the ordinance for five spaces plus one per employee, we calculate that there would be thirty-three parking spaces required by ordinance. There are thirty-six parking spaces proposed, so that standard is met, and they don't exceed the maximum required by the zoning ordinance for the thirty-six spaces, so they comply. There will be one loading space on the south side of the building. For the architecture, the proposed addition to the building will be primarily brick on the office area and structural concrete block and metal siding on the warehouse, with the brick and block matching the existing colors. The office areas of the building are proposed to be seventy-five, are proposed to be eighty-three percent brick, which exceeds the minimum of seventy-five percent brick required for the office portion of industrial buildings. The ordinance limits metal siding to fifty percent, and the warehouse will be twenty-six percent metal siding. Finally, for the architecture, there's no rooftop mechanical equipment shown, but if there is any rooftop mechanical, then it must be screened according to the zoning ordinance. Next, for the landscaping, screening, and tree preservation, there's a landscape plan that's been included with the materials, and it includes plans for landscaping of the frontage, the foundation, the parking lot, detention pond landscaping, and general site landscaping. Additionally, there's a restoration plan included for the south side of the site where there's currently material storage. The landscape plans also include the tree removal and preservation plan, including the mitigation of planting two additional trees. The site is currently surrounded by a chain link fence, much of which is proposed to remain. The new six-foot-high pressure-treated privacy fence is proposed along the south and west sides of the site to enclose the area behind that building where vehicles, equipment, and fuel will be stored. There's a photometric plan that's included that is designed to comply with the zoning ordinance. The only exception is that some of the fixtures would have to be adjusted for full cutoff and being downward facing only. It's a relatively minor change that I think we've spoken to the applicants about getting some revisions so that they show that the lights comply with the zoning ordinance. Next, for signage, there are no existing or proposed ground signs. Most likely, there will be a building sign, but there's no signage shown on the plans. So any signage changes that are proposed are reviewed separately by the Building and Inspection Services Division according to Article six A of the zoning ordinance. For the dumpster enclosure, there's an enclosure proposed on the south side of the building. The enclosure is designed to comply with the zoning ordinance, including eight-foot walls, the stone cap, bollards, and a conforming gate. Finally, there are four fuel tanks proposed to be located south of the building along the east lot line. Two of the tanks appear to have been established in two thousand and nine without a record of approval. And the third tank in the middle of the site is proposed to be relocated next to the two existing tanks. The zoning ordinance requires all storage tanks of flammable liquid material that are located above ground to be at least a hundred and fifty feet from all property lines and to be surrounded by earth embankments or other type of approved retaining wall capable of containing the total capacity of all tanks. The tanks that are shown on the plan are less than a hundred and fifty feet from the eastern lot line, and the applicant has applied for a variance, which will be considered by the ZBA tomorrow evening for that particular variance. According to the applicant, there are two walls to the tanks. The tanks are proposed to be located in an enclosure that's in a containment area that will be surrounded on the southeast and north sides by a brick wall that will match the dumpster enclosure wall, and on the west side by the opaque gates. Beneath the containment area will be a drain system for spill control that's shown as designed on the plans. So our recommendation is approval of the site plan amendment, one of the conditions being that the variance would have to be approved by the ZBA in order for the application to go forward. So our recommendation is approval of the amendment to the S&amp;J Asphalt Paving Site Plan at the subject site, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the following three conditions being satisfied prior to township board review of the site plan. First, revising the truck turn template or expanding the paved area on the south side of the site accordingly. Second, modifying the light fixtures to comply with section two point one three of the zoning ordinance to be full cutoff and downward facing only. And three, obtaining a variance from the ZBA to have fuel tanks located less than a hundred and fifty feet from a lot line, or complying with section seven point zero two F of the zoning ordinance if a variance is not approved. The last thing I'll say on that is the minimum of one hundred and fifty-foot setback for fuel tanks is a requirement of the zoning ordinance. However, both lots combined are less than three hundred feet, so it's impossible for the applicant to locate above-ground fuel tanks anywhere on the site because there's no way they can meet the setback of a hundred and fifty feet based on the narrowness of the site. So those are considerations that we've included in our report to the zoning board of appeals. We've recommended approval of those variances to the ZBA, and we'll go through that report with them tomorrow night. But that was just something I wanted to add in terms of, there's nowhere else they can put on the tanks on the site to comply with the ordinance. So either they would be approved for tanks somewhere on the site, whether it's the present location proposed or elsewhere, or the tanks wouldn't just not be allowed on the site if the variance is not granted. So that concludes our report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Patrick, is the project sponsor here? All right, do you have anything to add? Come on up. Okay, well, could you be available for questions? All right, thank you, sir. Anybody have any questions or thoughts?
I got a couple of questions.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
So there's a opaque pressure-treated fence proposed on certain parts of the property, is that right?
On the west side of the entry of the property.
Is that required by ordinance?
It would be required if there's outdoor storage for screening purposes from adjacent sites, if there's outdoor storage, but much of it is not a requirement. It's probably for privacy or security.
Yeah. The reason I ask is there's existing chain link. If pressure treated is required, you'd probably need a variance for that, but it sounds like it's not a requirement, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. If they were to do any storage back there and include storage that's not shown on the plan, the zoning ordinance allows outdoor storage, but it also has screening requirements. So if they start doing outdoor storage back there, then they would have to screen it accordingly. But I think they're only proposing to put in vehicles and related equipment and not material storage.
That's correct.
Is that right?
Yes. They actually want to leave the cyclone fence, but they were told we had to put wood fence up, which is what they don't want, because people are breaking into their property when they put a wood fence up. They'd rather put a cyclone fence, and if you want privacy, they'll be glad to slat it and leave the cyclone fence.
We don't allow slats in a cyclone fence by ordinance.
All right, well, then we'll comply.
So in the back, you're going to have storage of vehicles and not materials?
There's no materials going to be stored there. The materials that are stored right now on site are going to be used for the paving of the new parking lot, and the only thing back there will be trucks and equipment for paving.
Who polices that? Who checks on that? Code ordinance?
Yeah, ordinance enforcement, we have five full-time ordinance officers, and so they have, they're assigned different areas of the township, so they drive around frequently. So sometimes they'll see something on a site if it doesn't comply, and they also respond to complaints as well.
And the tanks, I'm assuming the fire department has seen this plan, and they've approved the plan with engineering, having the tanks without a hydrant or any fire protection?
They've recommended approval of the application that has been submitted, but sometimes when they look at it, they look at it as a site plan, as a site plan in general in terms of layout. But when someone will come in for building permits or for construction, sometimes there's detailed engineering, there's building codes that are applied, and there may be additional fire codes that when it comes time to do that, then they give it a code review. But in terms of the site plan review, they look at general layout, circulation, and placement.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure the fire department knew that that was there in case they had to fight a fire, that these tanks were there and they had some means of getting to it.
Yeah, they look at the circulation, the accessibility in terms of that.
That's all I got.
I have a question.
Thank you.
And really, it's more just a curiosity, why are they adding a detention pond?
Because the county's requiring it. Believe me, they don't want to do that.
More pavement?
The more pavement you have, the more retention you need to have.
Okay, thank you.
But do you want to make a motion? I like the way Commissioner Watkins reads motions, I have to say. Brings an extra element of drama.
Wow, real pressure there, man.
I mean, no pressure, no, no, no.
Maybe he's not in favor.
Oh, all right, I feel like I need to do it with drama.
But now, though. Yeah. I move to recommend approval of the site plan amendment for S&amp;J Asphalt Paving at three nine five seven one Michigan Ave, parcel one four one dash ninety-nine dash zero zero one three dash zero zero zero, and three nine six oh three Michigan Ave, parcel one four one dash ninety-nine dash zero zero one two dash zero zero zero, subject to all state, county, and township requirements and subject to the following conditions being satisfied prior to the township board review of the site plan. One, revising the truck turn template or expanding the paved area on the south side of the site accordingly. Two, modifying the light fixtures to comply with the section two point one three of the zoning ordinance to be full cutoff and downward facing only. And three, obtaining a variance from the ZBA to have fuel tanks located less than a hundred and fifty feet from a lot line or complying with the section seven point zero two F of the zoning ordinance if a variance is not approved. Support. All right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Eggenberger and support by Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner O'Conne, could you read the, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jankowski.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne, yes. Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairperson Zubor.
Yes. All right, Patrick, next steps are?
Next steps will be for, once the plans are revised according to the conditions, they will proceed to the township board of trustees for final action.
Good, thank you. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck. All right, and the next item on the agenda is Motor City Electric Company. We have a site plan to talk about. Can you tell us more, Patrick?
Yes, thank you. We have a site plan application for Motor City Electric. It's a contractor's facility like the previous applicant. The difference, the main difference with this one is that there is outdoor storage, and they have already been to the zoning board of appeals for a variance application. And this site is located on the west side of Belleville Road, and it's south of Michigan Avenue, as illustrated on the aerial map here, and located just south of where the Walmart is and just east of Walmart's detention ponds. So this is a relatively recent aerial photo where Motor City Electric has commenced some storage operations and other use of the site. And Motor City Electric is an electrical service contracting company, and it's seeking zoning approval for the use on the site as well as site plan approval at this time. The site was previously occupied by H.W. Motor Homes, and the applicant is proposing the following four changes to the site. Generally, it's summarized in four changes. And by the site, we refer to the nine parcels that are illustrated there. The first change is to create outdoor storage areas for materials as shown on the site plan with the associated paved drives. Second change is expanding the parking lot on the north side of the site. Third is construction of a detention basin south of the building and parking lot. And fourth is related changes to landscaping, loading, dumpster enclosure, lighting, and fencing. The existing zoning is light industrial, and contractors' establishments are permitted uses in the light industrial zoning district, and outdoor storage is permitted in a contractor's establishment, subject to the requirements of section twenty-two point zero three of the zoning ordinance regarding the outdoor storage of materials. Going on that topic, for outdoor storage, the zoning ordinance requires outdoor storage to be located behind the front line of the building, located outside of all side and rear yard setbacks, and screened with opaque fencing that is not chain link. And that's an ordinance requirement. At its meeting on November tenth of two thousand and twenty-two, the zoning board of appeals approved the following variances for the outdoor storage. First, the ZBA approved allowing outdoor storage to occupy the north side yard setback and the west rear yard setback. There will not be storage in the south side yard setback because that area will have the detention pond. The property to the because that area will have the detention pond. The property to the west contains Walmart's stormwater pond, and the property to the north contains a residence. And at the ZBA meeting, both adjacent property owners had included written statements of support to the ZBA for those variances. The second variance proposed, or that was approved for the outdoor storage, was to allow the screening of the outdoor storage areas to be chain-link fence without vinyl slats along the west side of the property, and to have chain-link fence with vinyl slats, and maintain trees along the east side of the property line where it's shown on the plans. And by the east side of the property line, that's the front side that's adjacent to Belleville Road. The screening on the north side will be an opaque wood fence, and the screening on the south side is an existing concrete wall on the adjacent property. Along the east lot line, which is the front along Belleville Road, there will be 60 linear feet of opaque wood fence north of the northernmost driveway, and 85 linear feet of opaque fence south of the southern driveway. The other areas along the east side of the lot line will have a chain-link fence with vinyl slats, which will be screened from Belleville Road with a double row of eight-foot-high evergreen trees spaced about 15 feet on center from each other. So those two setbacks related to the outdoor storage, or those two variances related to the outdoor storage were approved by the ZBA. All the fences will be eight feet high, which is the maximum permitted fence, maximum permitted height of a fence in an industrial district. Other than the variances granted, the outdoor for the outdoor storage setbacks, the plans comply with the requirements of the LI zoning district for the lot width, building height, front yard setback, side yard setback, and rear yard setback. For access management, there are currently three points of access to the site, all of which are from Belleville Road. The applicant proposes to close the southernmost access and retain the two access points, which are located in front of the building. The landscape plan shows trees, sod, and irrigation in the areas of the closed access. And the truck maneuvering plan on sheet one of three shows sufficient maneuvering access areas. For the parking and loading, there are 32 parking spaces proposed, and the ordinance requires at least 30 parking spaces. So the 32 proposed spaces are within what's allowed by the ordinance for the maximum. The ordinance allow, the ordinance requires all off-street parking areas, access lanes, and driveways to be hard-surfaced with concrete or asphalt. There was a third variance approved by the Zoning Board of Appeals on November 10th, 2022, to allow asphalt millings to be used for the truck and trailer parking area on the south side of the site, which will be surrounded by a 30-foot-wide paved asphalt drive. All the other parking areas and access lanes and driveways will be concrete or asphalt. And the reason that asphalt millings were allowed instead of like gravel or something like that is based on how gravel could track onto the driveway and ultimately into Belleville Road. So the asphalt millings won't track as much as gravel based on the material, and it'll be surrounded by a paved asphalt drive. So there will be areas, if there are any millings carried, there's areas for those millings to drop on-site rather than being, being carried into the right-of-way. For the architecture, there are no changes proposed to the existing building. There's no rooftop mechanical equipment shown, but any rooftop mechanical would be required to comply with the zoning ordinance. For landscaping, there's a landscape plan submitted that's designed to comply with Article 5 of the zoning ordinance, except where noted. Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance allows the Planning Commission to modify specific standards of the landscaping in Article 5 of the ordinance, provided that any such adjustment is in keeping with the intent of the ordinance. And there are three modifications that are proposed. First is for the frontage landscaping. The front yard does not currently comply with the frontage landscape requirements, and the landscape plan includes the required berm and evergreen trees and ornamental trees, sod, and irrigation. Also, there are many gravel areas in the front yard of the site that will be converted to landscaping, which will increase the site's compliance with Article 5. The modification requested by the applicant is to allow the required deciduous trees in the front yard along Belleville Road to be replaced instead with evergreen trees to allow for, and also to allow for the required shrubs to be replaced with evergreen trees at a rate of one tree per eight shrubs. So this will increase the amount of screening long-term of the frontage by having more evergreen trees, fewer deciduous, fewer shrubs, but with the evergreen trees giving that screening effect that was recommended by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Therefore, we recommend approval of those modifications as they will result in better screening from Belleville Road. The second modification is the parking lot landscaping, which doesn't comply with the interior parking lot standard landscaping in the zoning ordinance. The landscape plan includes the required three parking lot trees, so there's no modification in the number of trees that are going to be planted to meet that parking lot landscape requirement. However, the applicant requests a modification to waive the 800 square foot of interior parking lot landscaping. We recommend approval of that modification because the site has not had interior landscape area in the past, and including it would be very difficult to include and also maintain site circulation based on the layout of the site. Finally, third, the third modification is from the foundation landscaping. The building currently does not comply with the foundation landscape standards of the zoning ordinance. However, the landscape plan does include the two trees adjacent to the entrance, and the applicant requests a modification to waive the required foundation landscape area adjacent to the building and the required shrubs adjacent to the east side of the building. Based on the layout of the site with the building and the parking and just the circulation, we recommend approval of those modifications because the site has had, has not had foundation landscaping, and including it would result in the loss of parking in front of the building. And those required trees are there, they're just planted elsewhere on the site. Finally, with the landscaping, as, as noted above in our report, many areas of the frontage will have a double row of eight-foot-high evergreen trees spaced 15 feet on center, which will result in 52 trees along the frontage. There are also three supplemental evergreen trees proposed on the north of the lot, and four supplemental evergreens south of the lot on adjacent lots, which would be contingent on permission from adjacent property owners for those trees. For the lighting, there's a photometric plan submitted. There are a few changes required to comply with the zoning ordinance. The zoning ordinance prohibits the light intensity greater than 20-foot candles, so some of the fixtures must be replaced with conforming fixtures to lower the illumination levels. Also, the light fixtures at the driveway entrance have to be moved out of the right-of-way, so there needs to be some consistency between the site plan and the photometric plan. They should be relatively minor changes. Finally, the ordinance does not permit light fixtures to exceed a height of 25 feet, or the height of the building, whichever is less, unless the Planning Commission can modify a height standard. This gives the Planning Commission authority to modify a height standard of a light pole, and someone doesn't necessarily have to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals to, to do that. The light poles within the site are 25 feet high, which is the maximum permitted by the ordinance. However, they are higher than the height of the building. Because that pole height of 25 feet does not impact other adjacent land uses, and it contributes to the security of the site, we recommend approval of the 25-foot light poles on the interior of the site, provided that the illumination standards of the zoning ordinance are met. For the signage, the site plan states that signage is not part of the submittal. However, section 6A.063 of the zoning ordinance requires removal of any non-conforming signs when a modification of an existing site requires submittal and approval of a site plan. Therefore, the existing pole sign along Belleville Road must be removed. Any signage changes will be reviewed by the Building and Inspection Services Division according to the standards of the zoning ordinance. And finally, with the dumpster enclosure proposed, there's a new enclosure proposed on the west side of the lot. The enclosure is designed to comply with the zoning ordinance for the eight-foot-high walls to match the brick of the building with a limestone or similar cap with bollards and a conforming gate. Therefore, our recommendation is approval of the site plan amendment for Motor City Electric Utilities at the subject site, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the following four conditions. First, approval of the landscape modifications proposed for frontage, deciduous trees, and shrubs, interior parking lot landscape area, and building foundation landscape area and shrubs pursuant to section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance. Second, approval of the light pole fixture heights of 25 feet within the site as illustrated on the plans. Third, modifying the light fixtures to comply with all other requirements of section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. And four, removal of the non-conforming pole sign along Belleville Road per Article 6A of the zoning ordinance. That concludes our staff report, and we'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is the project sponsor here? You were looking so expectant, I figured that was you.
I'm so awake.
Yes, you're so wide awake. You're much more wide awake than the people up here, at least the person right here.
It's been an exciting evening. I mean, who wouldn't be?
It has been.
Patrick's already ahead of me here. Good evening. My name is Michael Vogt. I'm an attorney for the applicant for Motor City Electric. With me here tonight, I have Darren Ferguson, VP from Motor City Electric, who can answer questions about operations and maybe more technical things about the site, if the commission has any. I have a very brief, like 10-slide just overview to help you envision exactly what we're proposing here for our site plan and redevelopment. If you could go ahead to the next slide, Patrick. So quick overview on Motor City Electric here. Gives the, I don't need to read the bullet points, but they are a, you know, local Wayne County-based electrical contractor. They do a lot of service for DTE in servicing the lines and doing other contracting work for DT and utility providers.
If you could get to the microphone, please.
Sorry about that.
To get that close.
Sorry about that, I'm usually too loud. Go ahead, Patrick.
We have folks at home, so.
Just a quick overview of the site, what it will be and is compared to what it used to be. The former use was a, you know, legal non-conforming use when, when we purchased the site. Obviously, that's been discontinued, the former RV, storage, and sales. And now we are converting to a use that is permitted by right. And really, it's going to serve as a service hub for Motor City Electric's vehicles and the materials that those vehicles and technicians need when they hit the road to take care of the downed power lines and other, you know, very infrequent electrical issues we have with our, with our grid in this area. We're going to be parking about 22 or so service vehicles, again, storing the materials as described by Patrick with the outdoor storage and some back office work inside the building. It's obviously a very light intensity use for the, what's allowed within the light industrial zoning district. If you could go ahead to the next slide, please. Getting away from the mic again. Just a quick aerial and overview of the properties, the property and the surrounding uses. As Patrick noted, to the west, we have Walmart's detention pond and an undeveloped and actually landlocked parcel, which will not be developed for any, any foreseeable future. To the south, we have the auto yard, and to the north, it is a residence, but it appears to be some sort of home occupancy with a commercial use of some kind. We, I don't know exactly what it is they do, but I saw some construction equipment and staging equipment, trailers type things being stored. So, but nonetheless, all of the adjacent property owners have been supportive of this, of this redevelopment and of the variances that we had to seek from the ZBA. The next slide. Just as I just said, this is just kind of little snippets from the signed statements of support that we received from Walmart to the west and the other two property owners to the north and to the south, saying that they were on board with all three of our, our variance requests, which I will very quickly run through, so everybody understands a little bit more what, what we asked for and what we were granted from the ZBA. The first variance request, Patrick mentioned that there'd be a portion of the lot that we would not be paving as required by the ordinance, instead would be using asphalt millings. Step away from the mic for one moment. Really, we're just talking about this field area within that circular lot. And for, for a few reasons, A, to avoid additional, you know, impervious surface area that would increase the size of the detention pond, and also the things that will be stored in that area, the materials are very heavy as well, and would cause, be caused for really constant repair to the, whatever asphalt or concrete was put underneath it. Variance two, very straightforward, relief from the prohibition on storage within the site and rear yard setbacks. Obviously, Walmart was, was supportive as that's a completely undeveloped lot, and they had no problem with storing near the lot line, just as the RV company had done before. Same story to the north. If you could go to the next slide. I don't even want to waste any more time. There's our two letters of support on the variances, and that was just to be able to store. As you can see, we're storing right up to the west property line, and similar it will be to the north. Go to the next slide. And this one, just to add a little color to what Patrick was talking about. So what you're seeing there is the eastern-facing portion of, of the property. So what you'll see is that, if I could just step up there, I tried a laser pointer last time, but it doesn't work on the, doesn't work on the glass screen. So on the, on the front of the property, you can see, so the building is just here and then depicted here. On each side of the building, you have the opaque fencing, including the gates that move. Those will be, also have opaque, opaque fencing attached to them. And then for the remainder of the lot heading to the south, you'll have these eight-foot-tall black hill screws and chromcolor piers that will be spaced all the way along. And behind those, you'll still have the eight-foot chain-link fencing with the vinyl slats behind for additional screening. So really, there should be absolutely no visibility between these staggered eight-foot trees as they mature, with additional to be screened fencing. So that was the, the nature of the, the variance that was granted from the ZBA. Screening, we were not trying to get away from screening. In fact, we were trying to increase screening because security is a very high concern for, for this business with the materials that they store in their yard. There's a lot of conduit, copper, things that people who like to steal things find attractive. So those are the three variances that were granted by the ZBA.
Now we're all awake.
Wake up, just in case. Anyway, still not awake. This continued. One thing I didn't know, know that was on the north property line, what the ZBA wanted us to do, they said, you know, since that property owner's okay with it, but that might not be the case always. So on the north property line, we are going to do the opaque fencing that's required to screen outdoor storage. So that's it for, that's it for the variance. Here, our request is fairly simple, to follow the recommendation of the planning staff. Obviously, we've been through several rounds of comments with the DRC. We would, you know, we look forward to getting this site up to code and, and paved and beautified with all this landscaping. And if anyone has any questions whatsoever, I'd be happy to answer them, or maybe Darren can, but that's really all we have.
Thank you. Anybody on the board have anything?
So, so ZBA allowed them to have the chain-link fence, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct. They were allowed to have the chain-link on the west side, and the chain-link were proposed on the east side with the vinyl slats.
But on the west side?
There's, there's an existing chain-link fence, because it's just that wooded undeveloped lot to the west, and there would be nothing to screen from, because that's a landlocked parcel.
That's the reasoning. Okay.
Yeah, so they allowed that to exist, yes.
Then it's, the front of it is the eight-foot opaque, is that right?
The, the.
By the building?
By the building.
On, on this side? So on the building, from here to here, you'll have the opaque, and then the chain-link and the trees start going across the way. Similar to the north, you'll have opaque. And then, what are the rest of the trees to hear back to coming up?
Yeah, so the opaque will be, here's the north side of the building, and the opaque will go across. And then the opaque will continue until we get to, I think here where the berm starts.
For the opaque, Planning Commission has, I mean, they have standards for the type, the color, things like that, and you've reviewed those?
The opaque fencing, there, there are different allowable types of opaque fencing. The ordinance doesn't allow chain-link with slats. So that's, that's what they have the variance for, for the other fencing. But other fencing, if it's an eight-foot opaque, it can be wood, it can be cedar, it can be pressure-treated, as long as something's durable. And when they go to building plan or review, they, they review the fence standards at that point as well.
Okay. My other question is, can we slide down a little? You've got the millings, your paved roadway around. This existing gravel, will that remain existing gravel? Or what, what's that going to be? Yeah, to the, to the east and west. So it's gravel. Okay.
Again, not, no vehicle parking. Again, not, no vehicle parking, no access, no vehicle access. That's not a circulation lane.
You say that, but it's enclosed, you're probably going to have something there.
Storage, I mean, we can do storage, you know, storage of our materials, but they'd be loaded on the truck that's backed up on the access line there and around the access route and loaded and off it goes. And then, the reason, what you was talking about earlier, but he had some, the township had concerns about when it was all gravel, about gravel obviously being trucked out onto Belleville Road. One, we're moving southernmost curb cut, so everything that gets picked up in here is going to get driven along this route all the way up and out and through. That there's a lot of runway there for, you know, just in case there was any sort of pickup or, you know. Gravel of asphalt millings or anything like that, and then we would be cleaning it and doing a wash.
But is storage, you're planning on storage on the existing gravel also, or not?
Yes.
I guess my concern is, you're putting the millings down to avoid tracking gravel, but if you're parking vehicles or anything on that existing 21 double A, which is gravel, you're still tracking it and it defeats the purpose.
Those are storages. That's where we're storing our outdoor materials. In the gravel areas that are not covered by concrete or asphalt, those, I mean, you know, this is a contractor's establishment with outdoor storage, and that's, those are the areas we'd be doing the outdoor storage. The ordinance doesn't require paving underneath outdoor storage areas, only circulation lanes, which I know we went through a lot with Patrick and the planning staff.
I'm confused on why, what's the difference between the middle and the sides?
Because vehicles will be, because we wouldn't have had to probably pave this or do anything with this area or seek the variance, except that we're going to store trucks here. We said we're going to put some truck parking. It's like, truck parking, and then you have to pave it. That's when we saw the variance. We're not planning on parking vehicles out here, which we're required to pave.
So, no vehicles over here?
No storage of the materials until the vehicles pull up, pick up, and go. Vehicles not be stored there.
Okay.
We have adequate parking spaces for employees. We have a surplus of available parking.
That's my concern. If no vehicles are being allowed to park there, we shouldn't have vehicles there. That would track gravel onto the roadway. Okay, so.
Okay.
All I got.
Anybody else?
Counselor, I don't know if you remember, you and I worked together in a previous life.
I reckon, I said, is that the Doug Weber who used to work at Verizon many, many years ago?
Yeah, yes, it is.
How are you doing?
I'll do the motion.
All right.
I don't know if I can send to the level of Brian, but I'll try.
Probably not. I mean, just saying.
All right. I move to recommend approval of the site plan amendment for Motor City Electric Utilities Company at 5390 Belleville Road, Parcels 132010027000 and 132010035000 through 0042000. Subject to all state, county and township requirements and subject to the following conditions. One, approval of the landscape modifications proposed for frontage deciduous trees and shrubs, interior parking lot landscape area and building foundation landscape area and shrubs pursuant to Section 5.07 of the zoning ordinance. Two, approval of the light pole fixture heights of 25 feet within the site as illustrated on the plans. Three, modifying the light fixtures to comply with all other requirements of Section 2.13 of the zoning ordinance. And four, removal of the non-conforming pole sign along Belleville Road per Article 6A of the zoning ordinance.
Support. Right, we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Weber and support by Commissioner O'Conne. Any further discussion? All right. Commissioner O'Conne, could you call the vote, please?
Certainly. Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jankowski. Commissioner O'Conne, yes. Commissioner Singh. Commissioner Watkins. Commissioner Weber?
Yes.
Our woman, Zuber.
Yes. And next steps, Patrick?
Next steps will be for the plans to go to the Township Board of Trustees for final action. Before that, the plans would have to be revised according to the conditions recommended by the Planning Commission.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Look, and we have another site plan discussion for Patel Brothers. What?
Nothing. Sorry, we're just talking about this one.
Oh, okay. Sorry, that's okay. Patrick, could you tell us all about it?
Sure, thank you. There's a site plan application for a Patel Brothers grocery store, which is located on a 2.6-acre parcel located on the east side of Canton Center Road between Hanford and Ford Road. Specifically, it's the Canton Computers site and located just south of Crow's Nest and just north of Matari Coffee. And the proposal is for the grocery store, a one-story grocery store that's 20,000 square feet in area. As part of the site plan application, the building on the site will be demolished. And so, we've reviewed the application according to the standards of the zoning ordinance, and the site is located in the C2 Community Commercial Zoning District. And grocery stores are permitted principal uses in the district, so there's not a special land use required. It's a use by right. The plans submitted show that the building complies with the front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, and the maximum building height. The site survey does show some overlapping legal descriptions along the south side of the subject parcel and the north side of the parcel to the south. The overlapping area is about a quarter of a foot on the west end, and it widens to four and three-quarters feet on the east end. The side yard setback on the south side is at least 26.8 feet, so the side yard setback will be met, which is a minimum of 15 feet. So, there's no issues with setback conformity on that south side. And all of the development is located outside the overlapping areas, except for, there's a portion of a sidewalk along the south side of the site that might end up being on the adjacent property owner's site. But as we note, the applicant may be required to attain an easement on the adjacent lot to the south if there is an encroachment. If such an easement is not allowed, then the sidewalk would have to be adjusted accordingly. But we think the easement would be likely because the sidewalk would benefit the property owner to the south. So, that's one condition that we'll have later on in terms of an issue with the site plan that as it goes forward, they're going to have to correct that discrepancy with the legal and as a result, potentially the sidewalk area, depending on the outcome of that. The building height meets the 35-foot requirement. There's a small rounded portion of the parapet on the front of the building, which is 36 feet 4 inches. But the ordinance allows for architectural elements to exceed the max height of the zoning district, provided the structure does not exceed 20 feet above the max in the district. So, because this is only 1 feet 4 inch, 1 foot 4 inches, it's acceptable. There is one point of access along Canton Center Road, and there is one proposed cross-access between the applicant's parcel and the property to the south. So, there'll be a cross-connection easement that's proposed. For the parking, the parking calculations of the zoning ordinance require 121 parking spaces based on number of employees and square footage. The number of parking spaces are 122. There are four spaces on the north side of the site that are being dedicated to electric vehicle charging stations. Within the parking lot, there are also four covered car corrals. One of our recommended changes to the site circulation is that the driveway in front of the building be two-way. One-way circulation is proposed, but two-way circulation is recommended just based on behavior of motorists and wanting two-way to prevent any kind of wrong way down a one-way where a shopper may not observe that. There's a loading space located on the north side of the site, which is in the side yard. The location and dimensions comply with the zoning ordinance, and the dock is screened with walls on its western and northern sides. There's a truck well on the north side with a wall on the north, and there's a wing wall on the west side of the building to screen the truck well and the loading area from Canton Center Road. For the architecture of the building, the building will be at least 50% brick, which is the requirement of commercial buildings for the percentage. On the western front side, the building will be composed of a mix of brick, stone veneer, granite veneer, and glass and ephes. 47% of the front will be glass, so there'll be a lot of glass in the front. The brick and stone veneer will be less than 50% on the front, which is okay, because the total building brick of 50% is met or exceeded. For the landscaping, the landscape plan is designed to comply with the zoning ordinance for the frontage, the foundation, the parking lot and buffer landscaping along the east side of the site. The east side of the site is adjacent to Discovery Middle School, so there's not an adjacent neighborhood where there's potential impact on neighbors. There will be the required screening on the east side of the site because it's a commercial property that abuts a property that's in a residential zone, but there's not the residential component next door where we may have those off-site impacts. For sidewalks, there's an existing sidewalk along Canton Center Road, and there's an internal sidewalk proposed to go from the Canton Center Road sidewalk to the front of the building. For the lighting, there's a photometric plan that is mostly in compliance with the ordinance, but the plans have to be revised to show that the decorative sconce lights are at a lower luminance level to comply with the ordinance. For the signage, there's a ground sign proposed on the north side of the entrance. There's also building wall signage proposed, and those will have to be reviewed by the Building and Inspection Services Division for compliance. The dumpster enclosure is located on the northeast corner of the site, and it's mostly in compliance with the ordinance, but the masonry on the outside of the wall has to match the masonry of the building. And the dumpster walls have to have a limestone or a similar-looking cap to comply with the ordinance. So, with that, our recommendation for the site plan is approval for the grocery store establishment on the subject parcel, subject to all state, county and township requirements and subject to the following four conditions being satisfied prior to Township Board review of the site plan. First, revising the plans to make the driveway in front of the building two-way. Second, correcting the landscape plans to comply with Article 5. Third, revising the lighting plans to show the decorative sconce lights at a lower luminance level to comply with the ordinance. And four, changing the masonry on the outside of the dumpster wall to match the masonry of the building and including a limestone or similar-looking cap on the dumpster walls. So, that concludes our review, and we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Patrick, is the project sponsor here? I'm guessing that that would be, well.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for your time this evening. It's getting late. We'll make it quick as I can. My name is Stephen Leachman. I'm with Partners in Architecture. The architects for this project, we've done a number of these Patel Brothers stores around the country. We currently have probably four or five that are under construction right now in Ohio and Georgia and Florida, and we have one starting in Phoenix, Arizona soon. So, Patel Brothers has about 32 to 35 stores around the country. They're very excited about getting into Canton. It's a specialty grocery store. Obviously, they're specializing in Indian foods. And we're anxious to get this one going, so if there's any questions, I can help to fill in anything that's not mentioned in the overview by Patrick. The four items he did mention, we have every intent to satisfy those requirements as well. The two-way drive-in front initially had some, a zone there for folks to pull over and do pickup and drop-off. That wasn't a requirement of the owner. It was a suggestion that came up in design. We will comply with the two-way. That makes a lot of sense. So, that's not an issue with us or with the owner either. And the other things are rather small and miniscule, but we will definitely be taking care of those prior to a submission to the Board of Trustees. If you have any questions, let me hear them.
Only issue I see, very well-designed, by the way. I like the way everything's put together. But the truck dock seems problematic to me. Just an opinion.
Anything specific? There is a program we've run, yeah, we've run a couple of times over and different program types that we've used to validate the maximum truck length. That somewhere?
Yeah, we use it, and I always run into problems similar, but I think it's 449.
There you go. There's one. Yeah, we're adding, there's been a few.
That incline itself, too, so.
Yeah, there's been a few comments about bollards on the building plan, and we're adding a couple there. There's a wing wall that comes out to screen that area from the view from Canton Center Road, so we're adding that as well because we know there'll be an occasion for the truck to take a chip out of that brick and much rather hit the metal post than the brick itself. But we're showing here, as you see in the diagram on the plan, relatively successful maneuver that an experienced truck driver might be able to negotiate. But it is, it is a conceptual idea at this point, and moving forward, we want to be aware of any additional comments we may receive during plan review. Sure.
Access easement, you've obtained an agreement with the adjacent property owner. Is that what's required for this ingress, egress easement?
That's, I guess, an access easement to the adjacent property, yes. That is in progress. The owner has not had a document to be able to submit at this time for that purpose. That's in legal right now, so they're reviewing that with the adjacent. As well as that misalignment of the south property line as well. That's something that has to be worked out through their legal department.
My concern is, you have a dead end, and it's not actually connecting to their asphalt. And even when you look at the aerial, it's the same exact way. Someone can actually just drive through there not knowing that that's, there's no connection there. There's, it's, it's not all asphalt.
Well, the intent, the intent would be to achieve that at some point with the neighboring property owner. They just haven't done it yet. Pardon?
Who would, who would build the asphalt all the way to their asphalt? You would?
Oh, that would be on the Patel property, yes. And then, from there to their existing asphalt, that would be, I think, a part of the legal agreement with the adjacent property owner. We haven't been informed of any of that now, other than their general intent to do that.
I guess my concern is, if you don't get that agreement and you build it this way, someone can drive through there not knowing, and it's dark. You understand what I'm saying?
Oh, sure, absolutely.
Yeah, and so, there has to be some closure mechanism to tell people, "Don't drive through here."
I would agree with you.
It's a complete dead end. It's a hammerhead, basically.
Agree with you on that. That may come out as a result of the discussions and the working through of that connection with the adjacent property owner.
Right now, it looks like there's parking blocks, right now, existing.
Those are stripes indicating that there's a sidewalk connection, pedestrian way.
No, I mean, on the existing area.
Oh, gotcha. Okay, sure, sure.
There's just parking right there, but with those blocks, they know that they can't drive through there. With your plan, they don't know that.
Ah, right, yeah, there you go.
You see what I'm saying? So, it's something to consider in a re-submit. There's no detention on this. There's a lot of pavement. How did you get away with not doing detention?
Underground detention.
Oh, okay.
Underground.
Okay.
There is, there is a site civil plan that shows the shaded area in the middle of the parking zone.
Perfect, yeah. The sidewalk, is that a requirement that the building connect a sidewalk to the public sidewalk?
This is, this one is outside of the central business district, so I don't think there's necessarily that requirement, although we recommend it whenever it's feasible, especially for something where you've got adjacent neighborhoods. It is, it is an area that is walked, so we would have recommended that.
But I think we should recommend that on all developments. Otherwise, they're walking through the parking lot, you know, blindly. So, what about the north side? I noticed there's no connection, so they are blindly walking to the entrance there. Could you, could you put, I mean?
I guess the suggestion was one connection from the public sidewalk to the building.
That's why I was asking if that's a requirement, if it's one connection, you know?
Yeah, there's not, there's not, there's not a specific requirement for that. The north end would be a little, a little more difficult because it's pretty narrow on that north side, and they have the electric vehicle charging stations.
I get it, yeah.
And the aisle here of 34 feet and change, it's wider than is required by the ordinance, but when we turn on the truck turning diagram, it's actually necessary for a truck to get out of the site. for a truck to get out of the site to have that width there.
Sure.
So that would be a little bit more difficult. Alternatively, we'd be looking at maybe something through, through the center of the site, but based on the orientation of the parking, that would have its challenges.
Well, no one would use it. I mean, anyone coming from the north is gonna cut through that lot. I mean, they don't know that walks there, but I get it, you know? At least there's a connection, and that, that's a good design practice.
The owner was very happy to see that and was advocating for that as well, because the parking lot walkthrough was something that they understood would be difficult at best, depending on the time of year, and they want to encourage folks to walk if possible, yeah.
Is there an ordinance for bike racks?
There, there isn't currently an ordinance for that. There have been cases where there have been bike racks put in, where, you know, applicants have proposed them, or in cases of plan developments or special land uses where there's more discretionary standards, those have been, those have been put in.
Yeah, we should probably look into that. I mean, a lot of communities are doing it, just a paved area with a couple hoops, you know? It encourages non-motorist activity, so, okay. That's all I got.
Indian groceries on a bicycle?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Sure. I'm back.
So maybe the owner would consider it.
Perhaps, we'll bring that up.
Isn't Greenland putting bike racks in there? I know it was, it was on their drawing at one time, or did we, is it there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Patrick, are they proposing any, any food?
Food inside also, or is just same, simple groceries?
Uh, for the inside of the store?
Yeah.
Let me see if there's, let me see if they have the...
Speak a little bit to that, I suppose.
I know, the bakery looks really nice.
Yeah, there's not a location in the store to consume food. It's mainly a purchase and carryout. It's a, it's a buy and, especially the, the bakery area, and we've, we've described that to a number of different municipalities and health departments. It's a, it's a grab-and-go kind of operation.
I was thinking, oh, it's got tea.
It's got an open bakery design there, so you could see the bakery workings.
Anybody else on the commission have anything?
Just a question, Patrick. Going back to this cross-access on the, on the south, is that, is that something that township is requiring, or just wanting to? Because it, just looking at this area, only because I've been there a few dozen times, Crowsnest is the one that seems to be struggling with regards to parking. They're the ones that have a horrible parking situation. I mean, people park in the gravel all the way in the back, because there's just no place to park. Has Patel or, or Crowsnest reached out to each other, maybe thought about sharing a cross-access up there? So, so the bar's usually busier in, at nighttime when the grocery store is closed, and they could be able to share some cross-access there with regards to parking?
I could say that there's nothing that I'm aware of that might have occurred in terms of conversations outside of the parameters of the site plan and the building design. I wouldn't be surprised if they have had a conversation, unless not aware of it.
Hours of the store?
Um, I think they're, they're typically, I know the bakery hours are noon to, noon to six PM, something like that, but I think the, the typical hours of the store itself would be like any other grocery store, perhaps eight or nine in the morning till nine PM. Might be less on the weekends.
I'm just thinking about it in terms of what was just brought up about the Crowsnest.
I don't know if there's anything that the township could approach both parties and see if they can, if they're willing to even think about it.
Yeah, the, with the cross-connection, cross-connections are required in central business district. They're not required in other commercial districts, but it's a best practice, especially when there's, there's opportunities to keep cars off the road, and, and especially if they want to go through different sites or be able to line up at a more advantageous area. With the parking in Crowsnest, if they ever wanted to do like a shared parking, the ordinance allows for joint parking agreements to take place between adjacent property owners. There's nothing that's forced by the township, but it is allowed by ordinance, so there may be an opportunity in the future, if both owners agree, to some kind of a, a shared parking arrangement. I could foresee that northern row of parking could be something where patrons of Crowsnest may, may try to park if there's an overflow of parking at the restaurant there, in which case, if there's a shared parking agreement, you know, that, that would be great. If not, it would have to be a private, private decision between the two owners of how that would be handled.
I think that the busier on the weekend, posting groceries, they're going, it's just insane. But then there are a lot more Asian or Indian grocery stores in the vicinity, and are busy with walking by. I mean, the next door, there's a lot of people, some of them, getting Indian grocery stores, so I don't think so would be a purpose parking lot.
Yeah, I don't know if there's gonna be any days where they would be proposed to be closed.
I think, based upon some of their bakery schedules I've seen, Tuesdays seem to be a day that they may be closed, as opposed to any other, that they'd be open Wednesday through Monday typically.
Is that grass in between there? Is that what the surface is, that five-foot? Or are there plantings in there?
Along the northern boundary, right there?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that would be a sod or grass, basically. We do have a landscape plan that shows all the plantings typically. There you go.
Yeah, someone can actually park and walk there.
They'd probably mount across that green space, yeah. So it is, it is grass. It's, it's gonna be graded and...
So two things are gonna happen. People are gonna park there and get towed, because that Patel owner's not gonna tolerate people parking unless there's an agreement. I would encourage that owner to, to make, you know, some sort of agreement or, or an effort in shared cost of just those parking area maintenance, you know?
Which one are you saying?
Crowsnest.
It would certainly benefit from that.
Yeah, and those are the, it's pretty far from the building. I don't, yeah, I mean, you're gonna get people parking there, in other words, no matter
I move to recommend approval of the site plan for a grocery store establishment. Use on parcel number seventy-one dash zero-three-nine dash ninety-nine dash zero-zero-zero-six dash seven-zero-one, subject to all state, county, and township requirements, and subject to the following conditions being satisfied prior to the township board review of the site plan. One, revising the plans to make the driveway in front of the building two-way. Two, correcting the landscape plans to comply with Article Five. Three, revising the lightning, lighting plans to show the decorative sconce lights at a lower luminance level to comply with section two-point-one-three and four, changing the masonry on the outside of the dumpster wall to match the masonry of the building, and including a limestone or similar-looking cap on the dumpster walls.
Can we, can we add, encourage Patel to reach out to the Crowsnests? Talking about cross-ac...
So that Allen can park in their lot?
Yes.
Can, can we add that?
Allen, O'Conne.
I would limit your motion to what you're gonna require. Like, if, otherwise, there's no, really no way to enforce that.
Gotcha, okay. Then forget it. I'll just park over there.
Allen has a standing reservation there on every week.
We didn't know this about you and the Crowsnests. Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Egenberger and support by Commissioner Watkins. Any further discussion? All right, Commissioner O'Conne, could you call the vote, please?
Commissioner Cruz.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Jankowski.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Conne, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Watkins.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
And Chairwoman Zubor.
Yes. So what's the next step, Patrick?
Uh, the next step for the applicant will be to make modifications to the plan according to the conditions, and then the site planner will proceed to the Township Board of Trustees for final action.
All right, we have a zoning ordinance text amendment for, to discuss for fences, walls, and borders. Patrick, take it away.
Okay, well, we have a seventeen-page report that I'll, I'll summarize by saying that most of it are, are pictures of corner lot fences that continue from our previous month's discussion. I think, given the late hour and the amount of content that's in here, it may be best to maybe take a month to digest all the pictures and come up with thoughts, and then come back and, at the February meeting with this, address that in earlier hour where we probably have more time and energy to really go through these.
Do we look that exhausted, or are you just feeling?
I feel exhausted.
I do, too.
Yeah.
Patrick, I, I would suggest to our two new members that maybe you could give them the, the previous, just so they know how we got to...
It's in here, it's in the package.
It's in here.
It shows the A, B, C, D?
Oh.
How we really like to see?
Yeah, it's in here.
So we're just sticking with C, and we're not gonna talk about A, B, or D?
No, it's, it's the packet includes the memo.
Goes all the previous discussions.
Oh, it doesn't have the pictures. Yeah, it does.
Does it?
I don't know.
I think they all look like the, the Cs. Okay, well, whatever, if you can decide.
Yeah, so at our last meeting on December fifth, we had discussed fences in the front yard of corner lots along major roads, specifically those ones that are subdivision entrances where you got the residential street as the primary, and then the non-primary road is the, the major, the major road, like Warren or Sheldon, something like that. And that it's not accessed by the major road, it's accessed by the subdivision street. So we had a series of pictures that we had at the December fifth meeting, and actually were in our November staff report, and the Planning Commission had indicated some support for allowing a fence to be located between the, the rear lot line and then terminating somewhere in the front half of the house, but a certain distance behind the front of the house. And so based on that discussion, we included sixteen examples in our January staff report. We just had one of, one of our intern staff just go through and just different areas of the township look at these types of corner fences. So we came up with, we actually have more than sixteen, but we figured this was a pretty good sampling of sixteen, just to kind of illustrate the things that we were talking about, and maybe look at those sixteen to see what we like, what we might not want, and somehow narrow down an image of what we like, and then we can build the text of our regulations around that. So mostly like a visual preference survey.
Okay, yeah, so maybe the stuff from before would be muddying the waters, because this, we're already honed in on one type.
Possibly, but we included the November fourteenth report in the packet, and we'll probably include all of the reports in future packets as well, just so that we can easily refer back to them. So if we ever think that, you know, maybe we, we want to be behind the front half of the house after everything, we can go back to that November report, look at the couple of pictures there, and then if we want to see more fences that are of those type, we can go and get more examples.
Great, thanks.
Right along, we have the master plan discussion. Erin, hi.
Hi, hello, everyone. Just very quickly, just reference my January eleventh memo. This is just the, the regular monthly update, so very excited to note that the community survey has been out since November twenty-ninth. It was set to close on January eighth, which was this past Sunday. However, there were still a number of responses that were coming in, so we've unofficially, officially extended that until this coming Sunday, just to let some more of those last-minute people get their surveys in. So if anyone hasn't done it, please do. This is your last chance to bug friends, family, neighbors, et cetera. So at this point, we're close to thirteen hundred responses. So last month, when we, or when I, when I wrote this memo, we only had nine hundred. This went out last Thursday, so you can see from Thursday to today, we've, we've increased dramatically. So good job, Canton. The Master Plan Advisory Board is meeting tomorrow. We are drafting and looking at some language for vision, mission, value statements. Those recommendations and ideas will be coming to the Planning Commission at a future date, so stay tuned to that. As always, the Master Plan Advisory Board meetings are always open to the public, so anyone can attend. However, there is no discussion with the public. We, there is no opportunity for the public to discuss with the advisory board members. Just want to make that clear to everyone as many times as I can, so that way the, anyone who wants to give their public feedback can do so during public engagement activities. And then finally, the RRC certification, so the Zoning Board of Appeals bylaws have been drafted, and they will be reviewing them tomorrow at their meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, and we are to the final segment of our board meeting, public comment. I assume you gentlemen have more to say, so...
I move we, do we have to open it? No, never mind.
It's not like a public hearing.
Hey, back, I'm still trying to digest that apartment project. One of the things on Lots Road, I know you'll, you'll come back to it, you gotta remember, too, that that sets a, that sets a precedence there with no curb cut, I mean, with no dig-sell lanes. When, when the VA came in, this board in particular, with the, with, with the traffic study that backed it up, showed the, showed the need for dig-sell lanes. With this new improvement on Lots Road, you're gonna be setting a standard, so like to look at that when that comes back to you. Again, how many units was one of those flats? Anybody recall? Was it twenty-seven in a building?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-six.
I was just wondering, you know, we, we're worried about the facades and stuff. Where's the electric car wares gonna, how's that gonna look when we get that in?
Thank you. And the other, Mr. McCoslin, come on up.
I'm gonna make this quick. It's, it's late. You know, I've, I've lived in this community for forty-one years. I've seen it come, I've seen it go. I've never seen it so discon, disjointed in our life. You know, what I sit here and listen to is just unbelievable. You know, we got a master plan going on, the public's invited, but you can't say anything. You get up here, you listen to this, you know, you're fighting for this guy to share his parking lot with a, with some type of drinking establishment. Have you ever, ever owned a business? Do you realize what it takes to own a business?
Yes, I have, sir.
Okay, so if somebody comes across on that parking lot and falls, what's gonna happen? Somebody's gonna get sued, right? Why in the world would a grocery store want to give up its parking? I don't understand. And it's almost like you're muscling.
First, first of all, it wasn't required, it was a suggestion.
But you muscle, you muscle, you muscle, you muscle.
No, we did not muscle. I would totally disagree with you on that. The Crowsnest is not obligated to talk to Patel Brothers about additional parking. If he's satisfied with his parking situation, then so be it.
I don't think you're obligated to even mention it. It's not the facts of the foundation.
A suggestion.
I don't think you're even required to suggest it, but what I'm saying is, what I'm saying is, you could sit here and listen. You got two guys out of ninety-one thousand people in this community. Why isn't the room filled? Ask yourself that. Ask yourself those questions. Why is this community...
Why don't you tell us why it's not filled?
You know why? Because people are sick and tired, and I'm one of them. Lived here for, see, that's what happens. You put your hand up, it doesn't matter to you.
I'm not sick and tired of it. I'm sitting here because I'm not sick and tired of it. I'm not here because I'm making a voluminous wage to sit here and rule on these things.
But think about what people have to go through. Put yourself, have some empathy, man. Have some empathy.
Do you think we don't own property in this township? All of us are residents of this township as well. All of us are residents of this township as well.
That's right.
So we're well, we're...
And as a collective group, we should act as such. We shouldn't be pitted against all this regulation and zoning upon zoning. One person could have slats, one person can't. It's in this district, it's in that district. You know, we, we elect people on these boards, you've got to remember, you're appointed on these boards, you're not elected, you're appointed, and that's the sad part. Because you know what? It's all subjective opinion. You want to change a roof line, you want to do this. It's thousands and thousands of dollars for these people. Do you realize that? Do you really realize what your actions cause? To go to the architect and have it changed? Don't smirk, ma'am, that's not funny. You're an architect, it's great for you, because you know why? It's more money for you. It's less money for those folks, and sooner or later, it's not...
Okay, public comment period requires that your year's shut-off at three minutes. Your three minutes is up.
No, they're not, because I still have my timer, and it's up right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Okon, and support by Commissioner Weber. Thank you.
Can we get a voice vote, please?
I know.
Oh, oh.
I.
Do you have any nays? Anyone want to stay all night?
No, I just want to make it official.